This conference will now be recorded.
Thank you, Bea. The public hearing of May 24, 2022 will now please come to order at 7:04 PM. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Bressard.
Present.
Let's go, Chris.
Present.
Mr. Glassburn.
Here.
Ms. Heeman.
Here.
Mr. Kelly.
Here.
Mr. Lindberg.
Present.
Mr. Skarle.
Here.
Ms. Williamson.
Here.
Thank you. Will the clerk please read the issue before council this evening?
Ordinance 2022-26, an ordinance creating new section 1139.13 entitled, quote, "Phase Development," end quote, of Chapter 1139 of the Planning and Zoning Code of the Codified Ordinances of the City of North Olmsted, entitled, quote, "Business Districts," end quote, for the purpose of authorizing phased development plans in North Olmsted Business Districts.
Thank you. I'd like to remind council that this is a public hearing. We are here to listen to the public's comments. You may ask questions and follow up to the audience comments, but there will be a committee meeting at the conclusion of this public hearing for more in-depth questioning. Will our Director of Economic and Community Development, Max Upton, please give council and the audience a brief description of the issue at hand?
Sorry, I promise this wasn't planned. So, this particular portion of the code allows for commercial development to be undertaken in the same way a lot of other types of development under our code are. One of the ones that comes directly to mind is our multifamily code allows for someone who wants to do a phased multifamily development to do so and get the approval for a phased multifamily plan. Right now, in our business district code, if there is a large-scale development plan, there's no mechanism by which we can give them an approval to undertake a project in a phased fashion. And so if I'm planning something that may be more transformative, that is larger in scale, it is significant risk if you have multiple phases that have to go through their own individual approvals piecemeal as opposed to having a mechanism allowing for a phased development plan to be approved.
All right. Thank you, Director. By the way, would you like to introduce your new administrative assistant there on your arms?
So, this is behalf of the duo. This is Lincoln. So... Sorry about that. My wife is coming down the stairs just as we got started, so.
Well, all good. We're glad to meet one of the duo. Thank you.
President.
So, if there is anyone in the audience who'd like to address council on ordinance 2022-26 only, please raise your hand to be recognized and then state your name and complete address for the clerk. If you live in a city other than North Olmsted, please state the name of that city and proceed with your comments, and you will have up to five minutes. All right. So, seeing no questions or raised hands with the agenda being completed and there being no further business to come before council, this public hearing of May 24, 2022 is concluded at 7:09 PM.
This conference will now be recorded.
I'd like to start the Building and Zoning Development Committee meeting on the 24th of May, 2022, at 7:09 PM. Present are committee members Lindberg, Williamson, and Heeman; council members Bressard, Skarle, Glassburn, Kelly, and Gilchrist; the Economic Development Director; the HR Director; the Safety Director; Service Director; Law Director; Mayor; and guests. On the agenda is Resolution 2022-26, which is an ordinance, excuse me, not resolution, ordinance, 2022-26, creating a new section of 1139.13 entitled "Phase Development" of Chapter 1139 of the Planning and Zoning Code of Codified Ordinances of the City of North Olmsted, entitled "Business Districts" for the purpose of authorizing phased development plans in our Olmsted Business Districts. Mr. Upton, do you want to reiterate maybe some of what you said in the public hearing? And then we can go from there.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and I'd be remiss if I didn't thank the Chair and the Council President and the Chair of Transportations for allowing me to participate virtually in these meetings. As you see, we kind of got our hands full over here. So, with that being said, and for posterity and the record's sake, the phased development plan, adding this to the business section, simply mirrors some of the other sections of our zoning code. As I stated in the public hearing, if you wanted to do a multifamily development, for those that don't know the jargon, that's, you know, a series of apartment buildings, you could have the entirety of your project approved as a phased multifamily development right now. In our business code, there is no mechanism. And so if you are undertaking a substantial project that involves multiple buildings and those sorts of things, it requires, our code currently requires you to come back for approval for each portion of a project, and that's a significant risk to a developer who may want to do four phases one at a time without any certainty that phases two or would ever be approved. So, this is just, this streamlines our process, hopefully makes us much more ready for catalytic-type investments to allow folks to be able to get a business district zoning phased development approved right from the rip, so they can move forward with larger-scale projects.
Thank you, Mr. Upton, for explaining that. One question, I think we talked briefly about this when we were considering proposing legislation. What recourse, so I think you brought up a good point that there's risk for the developer of getting turned down from the city for future phases. What is the concern or what's the approach as it relates to a business coming for a proposal for multi-phase and then present, you know, a plan that, you know, is sufficient but not longstanding for the first phase and require future phases in order for it to be fully come to fruition and walking away or not completing the second or third phases?
So, if I understand your question correctly, is it what in this particular legislation safeguards or hedges against that possibility? There's nothing in this particular legislation, but that is what it is at this particular point in time, right? I mean, that's the way our code reads. And so, you know, if I'm thinking through, let's just say, for example, a particular project has some sort of incentive attached to it, and everything that I've ever done with regards to public incentives are called developers' agreements, which I would work with Director Groh on crafting one that gives clawback provisions and protects the city should the developer not follow through on their commitments to the letter of what they proposed, they do. But as far as a mechanism in the zoning code to approve a phased development, this particular legislation doesn't seek to address that particular issue, and I don't think that's the place for it, in my humble opinion.
Thank you. So, you know, and this is to you or the other director. So, what would be the place for that to be? Or is that in a standard document for the zoning committee or Planning Commission? Or who makes sure that we have recourse, you know, as we approach these things? Because my biggest concern with changing this is that we enable a phased approach and plans are presented to council with future phases that make it extremely attractive, and then those don't come through and they never, you know, we never see it as counsel for those future phases, and we've approved something that is suboptimal because it came with, you know, a much broader scope than what was delivered.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, Mr. Director Groh.
Thank you. I mean, it is, to some extent, there's a risk, although I think it's somewhat limited when dealing with these types of arrangements. There's no requirement that we accept a phased project. It's not mandatory. You know, these folks, if they're going to make a, we've had projects in other districts that have gone through phases. I'll give you the North Olmsted where Target is located. We can recall that went in multiple places. It's not going to fit every project. We've had across the street, to some extent, it's not really phased, but, you know, the storage facility where the Toys R Us was located. Or we might have had, we did it pursuant to a litigation. There was a judgment entry where we have a loft is located, and then the restaurant went in. There was a contemplation at the beginning of the project about what was to be expected, and it was locked down pretty tight as to what was going to happen. You know, we don't have to accept it for every project. If the city didn't believe that it was viable, if the city didn't believe that it was, you know, that it was of the type of project that was good for the community, we wouldn't have to do it and phase it. But I think for those scenarios where it's appropriate, where we have a significant capital outlay for a developer coming in with a sizable project, it would work. You know, if somebody's going to put a significant investment down, and it's going to be multiple pieces, they want the assurance that, look, we're going to be able to, you know, make an initial investment, and at the same time, you know, six months from now, a year from now, that the city doesn't just say, well, we changed our mind. So, it kind of goes both ways, and I think with the proper controls, we can control that. You know, deviations from approved plans prohibited, they'd have to start over again. You know, and that's not going to be necessarily met with a great deal of appreciation by the city. Or alternatively, we could have some other agreements in place to ensure that that's the path that they're going to take. So, I think there's some level of control. It's going to be on a case-by-case basis. It doesn't have to be done in every project, and, you know, for those projects where it's suitable, you know, it could be a valuable tool.
Thank you, Director. Ms. Heeman? Ms. Heeman, go ahead.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think the, you know, the clawback provisions will help some of that because, you know, you're already upfront saying, if you don't do this, we're going to take this back, or something like that, right? But my question is, Director, how far out do you see the timeline of phasing? So, for example, would you say that someone comes to us and says, okay, you've got five years to complete, 10 years to complete? Is that a standard timeline? Or is that case-by-case, meaning someone says, we're going to do phase one, you know, it's going to take us two years, phase three, we're going to wait a year, then we're going to take two more? How do you envision that timeline and what will be in our legislation, you know, guiding those things?
So, it's very much a case-by-case basis with each particular project, right? As you well know, real estate, no two projects are the same in terms of building type, asset class, all those sorts of things. So, the goal is to create a mechanism that is accessible and usable, but not make it so rigid that we kill a fly with a bazooka-type analogy, right? So, everything, as Director Groh stated, would be a case-by-case basis. I know in our plans now, we have a project that is going to have to come before council again. The council approved in 2019, pre-pandemic, but they didn't pull permits for a year, and their approval went away, right? So, those mechanisms, those particular provisions still exist within our code, so that if you don't move, you lose the approval. And so, that's the Arby's project over on Lorraine Road that's going to be coming before you all here in the next few months. But that's a good example of that.
Any other questions from committee? Questions from council? Okay, seeing none, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve Ordinance 22-26 and ask for a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed three to zero, and I will conclude the Building and Zoning Development Meeting at 7:20 PM.
I'm ready to start. Bea, if you want to leave a recording?
This conference will now be recorded.
We start the Streets and Transportation Committee, 5/24/22, at 7:21 PM. All of council is here, the mayor, law director, finance director, HR director, economic director, safety director, service director, special assistant to the mayor, and guests. Tonight, we're here to discuss 2022-44, a resolution authorizing the Director of Economic and Community Development to request statements of qualifications from qualified professionals to provide services required for the formation of a transportation for livable communities initiatives plan, TLCI, and further authorizing the mayor, following approval by the Board of Control, to enter into a contract with the firm selected in the RFQ process. Mr. Upton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And through the chair and to all members of council, this particular legislation before you tonight was the product of collaboration with a bunch of different stakeholders and thinking through some things long-term. In my first few weeks here, I was briefed by Engineer DeFranco on kind of all of our forward-looking capital projects. And the one that piqued my interest and the mayor's interest was this Lorraine Road paving project. It's an 80/20 project. It was scheduled to go to design later on this year. And basically, what Engineer DeFranco told us is that it's a, it's your basic three-inch mill and fill of five lanes of Lorraine Road. That project was going to go from Stearns to Canterbury, and it was going to cost a million dollars. Our local share was $200,000 of that. And in thinking about all of the things we've been talking about with respect to the Economic Development Strategic Plan, what the future of Lorraine Road looks like 15 or 20 years from now, which, as I understand it, is the useful life of a three-inch mill and fill, we thought it would be prudent, and council has expressed to us that we'd like to, they would like to have well-informed decisions be made with respect to these large-scale investments. I think, Mr. Chairman, your point on West 231st Street is well-taken in that regard. So, that being said, you know, the Transportation for Livable Communities is a region-wide program. It's run through Noaka. It's usually done through grant funding. And we're proposing to fund this internally. After talking with Director Groh and seeking a legal opinion with respect to the appropriate use of TIF proceeds, that is, the tax increment financing proceeds from the Great Northern TIF district. And then also, talking with Director Koppfer, we were able to, we're on sound legal footing with respect to utilizing these TIF funds for this particular purpose. The TIF funds has an unencumbered balance, I believe, of $2.2 million with very minimal debt service at this point in time. And we believe that if we're looking towards the future of what Lorraine Road ought to be, we probably should all have that answer before we sign on the dotted line for a six-figure project that only repays a very small stretch of our main thoroughfare. And so that was kind of all of the factors that presented itself. And then the mayor and myself had a meeting with Grace Calucci at Noaka, and she encouraged us to think about this more holistically, more robustly. And so that is exactly what we're doing.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions from committee? From council?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Glassburn.
Thank you. So, I think I know why this is from Stearns to Canterbury, but it does beg the question about the excluded portions of Lorraine Road. In brief, what are the long-term plans for those areas? And does this study contemplate that at all?
I apologize, sorry, through the chair to Councilman Glassburn. I apologize if I wasn't clear. The mill and fill is from Stearns to Canterbury. This study is looking at Lorraine Road from end to end, right? But the small portion that was scheduled to be repaired next year, that's Stearns to Canterbury. This study is looking at the entirety of the Lorraine Road corridor. So, I apologize if I did not make that clear.
Thank you. The follow-up to that would be, we must have some hints, some ideas of things that this study might address or suggest. Could the director tell us more about what those things might be?
Sure. So, I think, when you think of a complete street or a livable street or a complete corridor, you think of all modes of transportation being open and accessible, and everyone, whether you're biking, walking, in your car, accessing public transit, it is accessible to all of those particular modes of transportation. Moreover, speaking specifically about walkability, there's a great deal of research now in the economic development and planning spheres of which I run in, that the more walkable your neighborhoods are, the more walkable your streets are, actually directly correlates to the amount of spending done in your community. And so, we want to make Lorraine Road a multimodal accessible, hopefully at some point in the future, you know, more welcoming to mass transportation, those sorts of things. But I'm not a, but if you gave me a crystal ball and asked for my best guess, that's what I would say.
Was it everything, Mr. Glassburn? Okay. One question. You talk about the walkability, and I mean, I don't know what this greater plan is going to be, but have you seen Lorraine Road after a decent snow? And there is no walkability. You have people standing in the street at the bus stops. Anything like that going to be taken into consideration?
Absolutely. Absolutely. And I think, Mr. Chairman, when you think about being accessible to public transit, that's exactly some of the things that we're talking about. Everyone that has to experience or use Lorraine Road does so in a fashionable fashion where they feel safe. So, if you're standing out for a bus stop, you don't want to be standing in the middle of Lorraine Road after a snowstorm. That's just not the right answer. So, we're absolutely going to be looking at how we make public transit safer, how we make biking safer, how we make walking safer, and, you know, and obviously, car vehicle transportation. But, you know, important to note that the road belongs to all modes of transportation, not just private cars, right?
So, there's a lot of talk tonight about money. And do you have an idea what something like this may cost? Or is this the point of looking for the services to find out how much it'll cost?
So, in our conversations with Director Calucci, she indicated that a good number to have a really robust study is $150,000. And so that's what we have had a conversation with Director Koppfer about with respect to the TIF fund. And like I said before, I believe that positive cash balance is $2.2 million. Harry's nodding, so I believe that my brain isn't completely fried from taking care of two newborns. But so, we're in a good position to put these TIF funds to good use to guide our future transportation investments along our main corridor.
Okay. The last administration gave us a short-sighted idea about how to do, I guess we would certainly hope that that wouldn't happen with Lorraine Road.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I didn't hear that last sentence.
I'm just hoping that this plan for Lorraine Road wouldn't be as short-sighted as the plan for Clegg Road was that we got from the previous administration.
And that's my goal as well, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Are there any other questions from committee? Ms. Heeman? Miss?
Thank you. Do you have committee first, questions first, because I'll?
No, no, go ahead. I already offered that out.
All right. Thank you so much. Is there, as part of this component, are you going to look at the park-and-ride facility for perhaps like a circulator-type bus like they have in Lakewood for shopping? So that, you know, it just sort of circulates around our city, venue to venue, you know, store to store, place to place? And perhaps that facility can be utilized, you know, because now it's kind of not? So, is that part of your intention as well?
Yes. So, you know, I'm smiling because the mayor has told me about her husband's experience with the park-and-ride and how it's not used and how it's not accessible at this point in time. So, when we look at this study, we want to understand how users of public transportation access public transportation? What are the gaps, right? And so what you're talking about as far as circulation may very well be a gap in the public transportation needs. And so, that's a very long-winded way of saying, yes, we are going to look holistically at what our public transportation is and how that vis-à-vis Lorraine Road's future.
Mr. Chair, follow-up, may I?
Please.
Thank you. It's not a follow-up question. It's just a comment. I do also miss the park-and-ride. I took it every morning and dropped me off right in front of the door of my office and picked me up right on the other side of the street and brought me right back to North Olmsted. And it was a very comfy ride, even with footrests. So, I truly do miss it, and I think that, I know a lot of other residents do as well. So, it was sad to see it go. And thank you, Ms. Upton, for looking at this for us. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And through the chair to Ms. Councilwoman Heeman, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that the mayor was, mayor and I met with RTA and Noaka directly, Grace Calucci, and I can't think of the lady's name, the new RTA director.
See India Birdsong, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mayor. And so they are aware that we are looking at Lorraine Road. They asked specifically about the park-and-ride. And so the RTA, all the way at the sea level, will be engaged in this particular process as well.
All right. Thank you. Is there any other council questions? Mr. Lindberg?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a comment as part of the study. I would hope that we look at, as you mentioned, Mr. Upton, about walkability. I hope that you look at the entry points for their different business properties onto Lorraine Road too. And if there's any components of legislation we need to look at that would help make that more walkable for residents or just transit in general on Lorraine Road as far as curb cuts, et cetera. You know, certainly happy to try to support that endeavor as well as part of the study.
Anyone else from council? Seeing none, I would recommend 2022-44 to all of council and ask for a second.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
As to three to zero, committee ends at 7:35 PM.
Dwayne, you could go ahead. I'm sorry.
That's okay, B, I'm ready whenever you are.
Go ahead.
Okay, I would like to call the, hold on, got to write the time down. I'd like to call the Recreation, Public Parks and Buildings Committee meeting to order at 7:36 PM. Present are committee members Heeman, Skarle, Limper, council members Kelly Williamson, Glassburn, and Glassburn. Council President Bressard, the mayor, the law director, finance director, economic development director, safety director, service director, human resource director. We're here this evening to discuss 2022-51, which is an ordinance authorizing the director of finance to request proposals for professional appraisal services to perform replacement cost valuation of city property and further authorizing the mayor, subject to approval of the board of control, to enter into an agreement with the firm selected in the RFP process and declaring an emergency. I would like to just state that this is actually somewhat of a housekeeping matter that I'm going to guess is done about every five years, three to five years on our buildings. And I'm hoping that, Mayor, I don't know who you've decided will take this. So whoever that person is, please raise your hand and continue.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our finance director is going to lead the discussion. And any support she needs will be from our human resources director. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both. Director Coffer then first, please.
Yes, Councilwoman Heeman, we've discussed this during budget hearings in prior years. While we do do like market analysis upgrades to our property to keep for our insurance purposes. And like, for example, when we did the wastewater treatment plant, that huge renovation, we provided an upgrade to the costs. But this is a good practice recommended to get, make sure that all our property, our buildings and our contents are at replacement cost value. And we all know, you know, like just look at the used car market right now, how that replacement cost value can go up too. So and this proposal is to do a complete one. And then we'll do upgrades like every three years. I've talked to a few cities and they seem to do it every three years, kind of in conjunction with how the county does reappraisals every three years with our property. So they kind of use that as a guide to when we would get it again.
Thank you, Director. Director Kidd, do you have anything that you'd like to add to that?
I just want to add that we are planning on going out to bid for general liability insurance. And the appraisal is a very important piece of that to make sure that we are insured properly, that we're not overinsured or underinsured mostly would be the concern. So the appraisals are a big piece to that.
Thank you. And could either directors tell me that, so when we, in the off-years, for example, so we do this about every three years, right? And that will be our plan going forward. Do we incrementally then, perhaps Director Coffer, you could tell me, do we just value our buildings at like a 5% more across the board in the off-years without an appraisal? Or we let them stay the same?
Actually, our insurance carrier, not the carrier, but the broker that we deal with, they help us come up with, they know what property's gone up, commercial property and as such. And they give us an estimate and will increase it for, in not every single asset, but in total contents and things like that by area. So and if we have like big new equipment that, or infrastructure improvements, we tell them what we're doing. So if there's a big improvement, like I said earlier, when we did the wastewater treatment plant and system, you know, and millions and millions of dollars, we made sure that those assets were not just the old plant was upgraded to the new plant, we put those new dollars in at what we paid for it. And those have been upgraded over the years too.
Thank you so much. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, I assumed we were doing that. But, you know, for just for the record, I wanted to make sure that incrementally they were going up. And then we're going to do this complete valuation every three years. So I'd like to, any questions from committee or council? Mr. Skarle?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Question for Director Kidd. I believe you mentioned that we'll be going out for bid for new insurance companies after our appraisal is done?
Correct. It wouldn't be until next year. Because our current contract runs out in October. And so we won't have time by the time the appraisals come in and everything. So we're going to extend for a year. They have agreed to extend us. And then we will send them the appraisal so that we're insured for the correct amount, and we will bid that next year.
Okay, so when that does come around next year, we'll be looking at three bids from three different insurance companies or?
Well, we'll be looking at as many as we can get. We'll go out for a request for proposals. So as many as are willing to give us a proposal, we'll be willing to look at.
Okay. And then naturally, the premiums will matter on what the appraisals come in at all, our new equipment, buildings or whatever. And does that come before council when the price for the insurance?
Everything will come before council, correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments?
Madam Chair.
Yeah, Director Coffer, please.
I just wanted to, I mean, once we get the appraisal, if our insurance, our current contract, even when it gets renewed in October, at the end of October, or October 16th, I think it is, if that appraisal comes in in November or December and complete and we agree to it, I mean, they're going to increase, we're going to look to increase and make sure that we're properly insured right then and there, not wait until the following year when we go out again. So so will, and they've agreed that they will be able to adjust us accordingly.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much. Any additional questions or comments? Okay, I'd like to make a motion, please, to recommend to all of council 2022-51 and ask for a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. That passes three to zero and the meeting will conclude at 7:44. Thank you.
Okay, B, I am good to go with finance to keep rolling if you're fine to keep. Okay, so we'll call to order finance. Present are all of council, the mayor, at 7:44, I should say. The mayor, law directors of law, finance, economic development, HR, service, safety, recreation, special assistants to the mayor. We also have a number of guests for the meeting following this. Tonight for finance, we have six items on the agenda, and we'll go through these as quickly as possible. First is 2022-48 regarding amendment of the pay structure for the city pay tables. Who would like to address that?
Can you repeat that again, Chris, Mr. Chairman?
The first item for finance is
Mr. Chair, we can't hear you.
Mr. Chairman, you've muted yourself.
Oops, okay. So 2022-48 concerns the amendment of the pay schedule for city employees. So is there someone who would like to address that?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have our HR director and our is Tim Pincheck here? I'm not sure.
I am, Mayor.
There you are, Director. Okay. Yes, we have all the directors here who will address that with council. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I may?
Please do.
Okay, so the maintenance foreman position was actually added with ordinance 2021-88 at the end of December. So that is really just a title change reflected on here. It used to be the assistant superintendent of maintenance, and it was changed to maintenance foreman. So that's the first change. And then with the reorganization of the Department of Recreation and Public Engagement, which was approved with ordinance 2022-3, the coordinator position, the juvenile coordinator position is going to part-time. So that has to be reflected under the salary ordinance as an hourly rate.
Mr. Pincheck, is there something you'd like to add on as well?
Thank you, Mr. Glassburn. We actually met with the staff of this effects, and this will take place starting August 1st. So starting August 1st, the full-time position will go to part-time position. That person will be responsible strictly for the diversion program. And as far as the food pantry, they will be self-sufficient and also going to be part-time as well.
Okay. Are there any questions from committee? Any questions from the remainder of council? I'm not seeing any. So at this time, I would move to favorably recommend 2022-48 and ask for a second.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, 48 passes by vote of three to zero, which brings us to 2022-49, retirement of the fire station bonds. I assume Director Coffer, you might like to address this? Or someone else? Director?
Sorry, I'm not back in form yet. I keep forgetting to hit, un-hit mute. We've, we talked about this during budget hearings. And this is the legislation that will allow us to give notice to our trustee, our bond trustee, that then they will be able to notify the bondholders and call the bonds. It's a process and it's spelled out in the bond agreement and the trustee agreement, how many days and as such. So I just, we wanted to get it going so that there's no question that we're doing this. And we're not waiting till the last minute to then say, oh, we have to do it quickly because there's 45 days or whatever have you. So it is paying off the fire station bonds that the last payment was, is currently in 2025. We're paying them off this year. And this saves $54,275 in future interest costs for 23, 4, and 5 that we will not be required to pay. So the amount that, and you can see it in the budget that we had passed originally in December, we pay the current premium or principal and interest and as well, that's due December 1st of 2022, as well as the bonds that are due in future years that will close out the bonds. So there's, I think the budget had about $10,000 in expenses, but I've been told it's not going to be that much. But I wanted to make sure if there was any fees on behalf of the trustee or squires for doing this that they were covered, so.
Okay, well, thank you. This is one of the items in the budget I was excited about. Anytime we can actually pay off debt early and lower property taxes a couple of years early, that's great. Are there any questions from committee? Any questions from council? Okay, I will enthusiastically recommend favorable approval of 2022-49 and ask for a second.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Limper. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 That's three to zero. Okay. Next on our agenda is 2022-50, which is the transfer appropriations. Director Coffer, would you like to address that one as well?
I know, first I want to mention that last, or this week, maybe yesterday, you received an amendment to it. So hopefully you're looking at the one with the amendment. And I know a lot of these things have been discussed, and most of the directors can address any of the specifics of it. But if you want me to go through them in general terms, that would be great. Is that, whatever you want to do.
I believe I know what's in there. Are there any questions from committee? Would committee like further information on the items and the transfer ordinance? Okay, seeing no, are there any additional questions from council or members of committee?
I don't.
Okay.
I don't have any, Mr. Chair, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Limper. In that case, yes, Director?
I know we asked for it to pass the following week, the next council meeting, which is June something, right? Or is it? Because I think there's an extra week in here. So but there may be one additional item, and maybe we can do it as an amendment so it can still pass. Or we can put it as an amendment and you want to take it further out. But West 231st, I know you're all intimately aware of the timing deadline with getting the project awarded, the contracts done, and it started so that we meet the deadline of, I think it's the end of September, for completion with the funding mechanism. So we just got the bids last week on West 231st, and they're doing some sort of evaluation. But I believe it's going to be coming to the Board of Control next Tuesday. So we would like to add that on as well. It's going to be coming.
Okay.
You know.
Understood. Are any further questions on that topic? It's not really part of our consideration technically right now, though.
Yeah.
Okay, seeing none, then I would move to favorably recommend 2022-50, the transfer ordinance, and ask for a second.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Limper. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that passes three to zero. All right. Next, we're halfway done, folks, through finance.
Woo-hoo.
Next is 2022-52, allowing our employees Next is 2022-52, allowing our employees to have Roth IRAs. Sounds fun. Director, did something change that allowed us to do this or are we just?
Yes. Exciting stuff. Um, the Ohio Deferred Comp Program, a year ago, maybe, or maybe even longer, I think it was a year ago, started offering a Roth 457 plan that we can offer to our employees. But, and this legislation is what authorizes us to enter into the agreement so that then the employees, who are using their own contributions post-tax, will be able to make contribution and choose to do either or, or, or a combination of both of types of contributions to better help them with their retirement planning.
Awesome. Are there any questions from committee? Okay, any questions?
I do, I do, I do.
I'm sorry, Mr. Limpert, please go ahead.
So do we have like materials and everything to educate our employees on, on what that is? Or how, how does that, does that go through the, the state has materials or?
The state has materials. Mr. Chair, the state has materials. You can talk to their advisors. It's on an individual basis. But I mean, we do have brochures and stuff that we will be putting in finance. And I believe that we talk to all our new employees about retirement planning when HR to. My dog's really excited about retirement planning too. And so we, we do give them that information to make choices. And, but really, they need to talk to their tax advisor and their financial advisor to make determinations on what best suits their, their needs and their family needs.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I would just ask the administration to make sure that current employees get educated that as well. Sometimes you select your retirement plan and then lose sight of new options. So.
Absolutely, we'll be sending out, we, we have the ability to send out broadcasts.
Okay, I think I saw a question from Councilman Kelly. And then Mr. Skarle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, to the finance director. So I called deferred comp today to ask about the Roth plan and was told it can't be done. So I'm wondering why.
I'm sorry, what did we say?
I called deferred comp today and asked them about this Roth plan, getting into that, and they said it can't be done.
Um, I'm sorry that you spoke to someone. We can't, you can't do it right now because we don't belong to it. So that's what this legislation is authorizing us to do. We're going to enter into an agreement to then offer it to our employees and then you will be able to do it.
However, however, I, I work another place where they're already in an agreement for that. And they said it still can't be done. So I'm confused about how this works. So maybe at another time you could educate me somehow how this works. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Mr. Skarle and Ms. Heeman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question is to Director Kidd. If this does work, which we hope it does, will this be a new line item on their payroll deduction for the people that choose to voluntarily want to get into this Roth? From the.
I think that's something that finance would have to, to answer. I, I don't know how it's going to show up on payroll.
Oh, I'm sorry. I should have asked that to Director Coffer then.
That's okay.
Maybe she can answer that.
No, it's, it's good. We, we, we all work well together and we, our things do cross over a lot in HR and finance, especially with payroll. The item will be a separate line item because it can't be, you can't combine. It's going to be its own deduction because you can't combine pre-tax and post-tax stuff. So.
Right, I'm sure they don't want to have their deferred comp mixed in with the Roth.
And, and many cities do both. So we should be able to, they, we know how to do it. So we'll be have separate deductions and one will be pre-tax and one will be after, or before tax, after tax.
One more follow-up, Mr. Chair, if I may.
Go ahead.
Director Coffer, I see that it's usually all in dollar amounts. So there'll be no percentages that they have to, you know, spell out. They're just going to give a dollar amount according to the limits?
Um, I, I didn't notice that, but I mean, they, they set their program parameters up and.
Yeah, it just says dollar amounts for different age groups, blah, 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 but nothing with percentages. So I was just curious if it would be a percentage of the pay that they'd like to take out or if it's just going to have to be a straight dollar amount.
I know that I'm, the other one as well is the, the one we're in now, pre-tax one, the, is a dollar amount as well. So it's not a percentage.
Okay, so I'm sure this one will be the same way then.
Yes, it is, yeah.
Thank you.
Sure. Ms. Heeman, I believe you were next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Director Coffer, is this, so I guess that to, to Mr. Kelly's statement, so having been a school district employee, for example, you know, this is an opportunity there as well that it's just called something different. It's got a different plan number, right? And, and that would be that, you know, you could have this IRA, but teachers didn't have it because teachers were separate than other staff, right? So could that be a classification maybe that, that certain, you know, groups of our employees can, can have this? And then certain others are excluded from this because they have a different structure by statute in their retirement funding?
Um, I'm, I'm astounded.
Fire, for example, have their own separate things, so they might not be able to enroll in this.
No, they're. Mr. Chair, to the councilwoman.
Go ahead.
Police and fire, all employees will be able to do this. So it, it's, it's a state program and it's, it's a 457 plan. It is not, it's not related to our pension plans where police and fire have their pension plan and PERS has our, the public employees do, and the teachers have theirs and what have you. This is a state plan and I've never worked for the schools. So I'm not sure if the schools can be in the plan or not, the 457 plan. I'm not sure.
Oh, it wasn't about schools. It was, I was questioning whether or not police and fire could participate. And maybe that was the reason that Councilman Kelly got the answer that he did versus, you know, versus another of our employees.
Right, okay.
We have the PERS, PERS then plus this, that's all. But thank you.
That's not the reason. I'll find out though, why.
Okay, are there any further questions on deferred comp? Okay, there's a joke in there about deferrals somewhere, but I'm not going to make it. So I'm going to move to recommend this and ask for a second.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Limpert. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 And that is three to zero to favorably recommend 2022-50, which brings us to 2022-53 regarding the city's website. I imagine perhaps our communications professional would like to address this if she's available.
Yes, hello, hi, good evening.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Councilman. So I do want to propose the idea of a new website. First of all, to start off, the visual appeal of our website is very unappealing. The visual appeal of a website should be a reflection of your organization, your business. And I do not believe it is a reflection of our city. We would love for our website to be perceived as engaging, exciting and a great place to call home. The overall navigation of the website is inefficient. I would like to compare it to somewhat of a labyrinth. You click on one tab and you are unable to get back to wherever you were at before. It takes you to a bunch of different pages and you end up getting lost. This would also make it more efficient and easier to update the website. Especially on behalf of me and the other people who do update the website. We would like to be able to have ease of access to it. And what we use now just is really not efficient. We also, with, you know, it being 2022, would love for it to be a lot more mobile friendly. So bringing in new, a new website creator, content creator would create ease and the accessibility to do that. And accessibility through your mobile phone would also create, like submitting paperwork electronically a lot more easier, which will, I'm going to touch on in a few more points. It also, without a mobile accessible website, it drives away consumers, business and potential residents. Most people go on the internet on their phones. So it is a really big thing that we should be looking at. Also with an updated website comes website security. And you want your security to stay with the time. I don't believe our website has been updated in a very long time. So security is actually a huge issue that I am concerned about. Submitting paperwork electronically would be extremely beneficial. This is something that I believe would benefit all aspects in City Hall, especially our economic development section on the website. Just being able to also make payments and as well as the ease of reservations and booking, especially in terms of, you know, maybe our recreation center or Springvale, anything like that. There are also numerous dead links on our websites. So bringing in a new website designer, we would be able to get rid of all of that. And it would also create a new ability for us to post job openings and create a better and more efficient process for applications to be seen, to receive them and that. It would also add integrations for our social media. We would be able to just put the links right onto the website and it would create a lot more movement for us. And a really important factor of having an updated and new website is improving our search engine recognition. And with this, it is, with updated content and an updated website, it creates traffic. And with this traffic, it creates openings for search engines such as Google, for example, to explore and gain information on the traffic that we are receiving. And it recalculates our site rankings. And with that being said, updated quality content helps promote our city and receive notice on search engines. I think this would be beneficial in all aspects in regards to people looking to move to the city, people who want to know more about what North Olmsted is about and what we have and what we have to offer. And with the extra drive to the website, it also creates extra drive to our social media channels, which increases the communication with our community. We want them to feel seen. We want them to feel heard. We want them to experience all of the exciting things that we have going on. And I think right now our social media reflects that, but our website does not.
Thank you. In a nutshell, to me, this is a update of our website as well as a update of our electronic forms and ability to conduct commerce with residents. And it is paid for as one of the initiatives out of the ARPA funds, is my understanding. Are there any questions on this legislation from committee? Ms. Williamson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Do we have somewhat of an idea what this may cost?
Uh, yes. Through research, I have, there's different options. It can range anywhere from $30,000 to $50,000.
The total digitization, if you will, of our paperwork and whatnot is a larger amount that is part of this project as well. Go ahead, Ms. Williamson.
I think I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Limpert, I think I saw?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. And again, I think, I think it's critical that we incorporate all of our stakeholders that relates to the forms portion of this, especially when it comes to the service of recreation and building. And I appreciate the administration's goal to try to improve this. Over and over again, I hear challenges regarding our website as far as being able to navigate it. And, and navigation of websites isn't easy. I mean, you have to be on it frequently in order to understand that. But it has to be intuitive enough that people are willing to keep coming back to it. So I'm looking forward to see what can be done on here. Again, I think over and over again, residents give me feedback that they have a really hard time finding things on the website. And, and unfortunately I've had the same experiences. So, so looking forward to this initiative to try and simplify it and make it more user-friendly in today's modern, you know, website feel. One thing I did want to ask is, is do we have a SharePoint? And I guess the IT Director, but do we have a SharePoint module within the city?
I, no, I don't believe so.
Okay. I just, I've seen, I've seen that be, you know, successful with being able to be leveraged as a backend on some of the website navigation to be able to, to plug into these like forums and portals and things. But just looking forward to what, what's come up with then in order to address both of these issues that we hear over and over again about, about the web traffic and the form entry. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Are there, excuse me, are there any further questions, Ms. Williamson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have maybe perhaps a comment and a suggestion. I know it's been difficult for some of our residents to find the link to even join in on these meetings. So if perhaps in the interim until something is done, is it possible to have a link placed on the homepage of our website for when we do have meetings? I mean, it's very difficult to find the link on the city page.
Sure, that is something that I can definitely work on, especially for the next meeting. I do know that if you are on the homepage and you go down to where the calendar shows at the bottom and you just click the council meeting, it'll take you to the link. But I do understand that, you know, some people don't really recognize that that's what it does. So I have no problem being able to fix that on the website for our next meeting.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Are there further questions from council? Seeing none, I will move to favorably recommend 2022-53 and ask for a second.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Limpert. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Three to zero. And our last item for finance prior to our public safety meeting is 2022-54, which is the 2023 tax budget. Director Coffer, I bet you'd love to address this.
I, I live for this, Mr. Chair.
Okay, please go ahead.
This is done every year. And for people who may not be familiar with it, the primary purpose of the tax budget is to set forth what the property tax, taxes will be levied and utilized for and to make sure that the debt service is covered that, that utilizes property taxes as such. Real quickly, Schedule 1 separates those taxes into different levies. And of course mine's backwards, here we go. And I guess the most important thing that you'll notice is that the fire station bond retire, bond fund is, is not here. So that is another verification that it will not be taxed and part of the levying process. It identifies if it's a permanent millage from our charter versus, because our charter allocates different millages to different purposes. And then there's some that are specific. These are all, this is the total amount. And then Schedule, but if you skip to Schedule 3. And then schedule, um, but if you skip to schedule three, these are the ones that are by, by the bond issue. So that you know um, how much is outstanding, the original date of issue, and uh, how much is required to meet principal and interest. And if you notice that, I think the important thing to point out is it's say, it's just over under three point five that's required to meet principal and interest payments. And two point three eight nine is coming from other sources, which is a strength that we have in our um, in our city because the permanent improvement street and storm fund base for some, the EMS fund, the hotel motel fund has as such. So um, there are various sources that help pay our debt service, which is important. The schedule uh, two is the one that just is a summary of funds. And it has the uh, of course I'm looking for it. It has the amounts that are uh, the beginning balance that's projected with our current budget, what is projected for the end of two thousand twenty-two. And then it starts with the revenue estimated resources just in total by the fund and expenditures. Which um, obviously we don't have a detailed budget yet for two thousand twenty-three. But um, I did put in things that we do know, like for example, that we're going to be spending um, the funds for ARPA. So um, in that, there's, there's monies in there for ARPA funding. We shall, should get the monies this year, so it will um, be spent uh, in twenty-three. And I believe that I, the only thing that's for sure in that is that's going to go through twenty-three and twenty-four is for um, the uh, police and fire that uh, was put in there in the funding tranche for this year um, to be spent in twenty-three and twenty-four. Um, and uh, I believe that there's going to be some sort of sidewalk um, fund uh, project. They may be doing it differently, but I know that they're intending to do inspections and things. Uh, that was the discussion, so I wanted to make sure that we had the ability to do that. But the only funds that are, these are not set in stone. These are just, just ballpark to ensure that we have the funds to operate effectively. And it shows the county that we have need to levy our property taxes.
Okay, I think that last sentence actually sums it up quite nicely. You're demonstrating our need of the county that we need to collect the millage. Are there any questions from committee on this? Any questions from council? Mr. Kelly.
Uh, to the Finance Director, please.
Go ahead.
So you're paying off the um, our, our stations early? Are our taxes going to go down?
Yes. Um, they uh, as I said, if you look at Schedule One, you'll note that there is, there is no levy, voted levy on there for the fire station. So you can tell that there's, that we're not requesting any monies to be levied for the fire station.
Thank you. I mean, the, we can look at it on the schedule, but those listening that don't have the schedule might be interested.
Yeah, no, that's, I, yeah, that's good, a good point to reiterate, absolutely.
Thank you.
And to be one hundred percent clear, the zero point four mils that will go down uh, on tax bills, if another tax increase is passed by some other entity or, you know, that will be offsetting that. Not, you know, a guarantee by our Finance Director that taxes will be lesser next year.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I totally appreciate that.
Okay, uh, are there any further questions? Seeing none, I would move to favorably recommend twenty twenty-two dash fifty-four and ask for a second.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Limbert. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right. That is passing three to zero. And it is eight nineteen, and our public safety meeting can begin when the chair is ready.
I know we received a number of documents today, so I will be utilizing my phone rather than trying to make copies. So if I'm scrambling, that's, that's where I'm looking. So um, with that being said, we'll begin the Public Safety, Health and Welfare Committee this evening at eight twenty PM. Present are all members of council, all members of the administration. We have our police chief, our fire chief. I see Mr. De Seco from Chagrin Valley. Um, and on the agenda this evening is Resolution twenty twenty-two fifty-five, which is the contract with Chagrin Valley Dispatch um, for providing emergency dispatch services to the city. Who would like to begin this conversation? Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Council, one of the things I learned early on after assuming the office of mayor was a timing issue regarding dispatch consolidation. I was informed by our safety leaders, the city had to either get four additional cities to bring both police and fire dispatching to North Olmsted, or North Olmsted must move to a regional dispatch center or risk the loss of funding from Cuyahoga County. It continued to be a hot topic at my first mayors and managers meeting. I cannot tell you how upset I was to find out from our police and fire chiefs, along with other area mayors, that this had been years in the making and had never been brought to council's attention. Part of my frustration, and I'm sure yours as well, is that had council known this, different decisions might have been made over the past few years regarding dispatch. I cannot speak to why the previous administration knowingly kept this quiet and continued on business as usual. However, as mayor, I do not have the luxury of looking into the past and wishing things had been handled differently. I must address the challenges as they stand today. My initial reaction was that we need to keep dispatching here in North Olmsted. And I wanted to find four additional cities to bring both police and fire dispatching here. And working with Safety Director Schofield, Fire Chief Shap, Police Chief Wagner, Captains, Captain Peters and Sergeant Fiorito, it quickly became clear that while possible, it would be difficult to keep dispatching here. I made it clear, and everyone on the team agreed that priority number one was finding a financially feasible way to keep dispatching here, and if that was not possible, to ensure that all of our current dispatchers would be offered a job wherever we went. Part of our research included visiting Westcom, Strongsville and Chagrin Valley with the team. It also included listening in and participating with meetings with other west shore mayors. Throughout this process, Chagrin Valley quickly moved to the front of the pack. In fact, they were the only entity from the very beginning to assure us that all of our dispatchers would be offered a comparable job to what they have today with us if we moved there. The fact is, regionalization in dispatching is a reality. It's happening not just here in Cuyahoga County or just in the state of Ohio, but across the nation. Some states have actually had regional dispatching for decades. I may not like it, you may not like it, but it doesn't mean that we dig our heels in while ignoring what is best for our residents. I was elected to make this the best possible decisions for the people of North Olmsted, and that is exactly what I intend to do. North Olmsted simply does not have the resources to continue on with dispatching with the county pooling funding support unless you are real, regionalized. Our residents will not see a change in service. When they dial nine one one, they will still get a voice on the other end of the line, and the officer, firefighter or paramedic will still be dispatched in the same way. In fact, our dispatch times are likely to speed up. By taking our time and looking at every detail, moving our dispatch revealed itself as the only reasonable answer to this problem. I'm not happy the conclusion was to leave North Olmsted, nor do I believe that our safety director, our police and fire chiefs, or our dispatch employees are happy about it. I do not enjoy having to make this decision. However, it was not something done lightly. As mayor, I am ultimately responsible and must make the best decision on behalf of our residents. Their safety is my top priority. I feel for our dispatchers. I know some residents will be concerned that someone in the city of North Olmsted, who's not sitting in our city, will be answering their emergency call. But this is the direction the state and the county are making us and all cities in Ohio move in. These are the cards in front of us. We must deal with the deck we are dealt and make the best decision for our residents. There is absolutely no doubt in my mind that the right decision is to move to Chagrin Valley Dispatch. At this time, with your permission, Madam Chairwoman, I'd like to turn it over briefly to our Public Safety Director, followed by Chief Shap and Chief Wagner to make a few statements before um, you commence with questions from your committee and for council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Director Schofield, you're muted.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Mayor and Madam Chair. There are just a few points of reference that I'd like to focus on um, this evening around our decision-making process and the work of the Public Safety Department Leadership Team that the mayor pulled together um, uh, to take a real consideration of this. Um, I will then turn it over to our experts in fire and police. Finding the best solution for emergency dispatch challenges has been a priority-heavy lift assignment for me since my first day on the job. It is one that needed serious consideration and uh, consideration done with all the due respect for our current services. I met with both chiefs on February tenth to discuss this in detail. At that time, they provided four options to me. The first one um, was Chagrin Valley building out at our dispatch center. And that uh, was the first and best recommendation they, they made for me. Um, and really what they highlighted then was the game changer was that Chagrin Valley Dispatch would take all of our employees. The second option presented was that Chagrin Valley Dispatch would um, would be dispatching for us, but at another location. The third option presented and that we discussed was Westcom, um, which currently is only able to dispatch for fire and does not have um, the adequate resources um, for police. Um, and we can, I can talk a little bit more about that later. But essentially that Westcom did not have the, the resources and the expertise that we needed. The fourth option was to continue as is in North Olmsted um, without making any changes. And both chiefs said and felt very strongly that this could not um, this could not be the solution for any number of reasons which the mayor just highlighted, including the loss of nine one one funding, uh, the immediate need to purchase new radios and other capital investments in addition to the ongoing staffing challenges that we have. I know that there are feelings that this has been a very rushed process. But I know that it's been actually in the works for, for months. And I don't think we've rushed it, but I think it's been a very thorough process that has had to adapt to an ever-changing set of circumstances. The Public Safety Team has met its due diligence in conducting its research and analysis and reaching out to our peers for their input, uh, making site visits to Chagrin Valley, to Southwest and to Westcom. Um, please, please understand that this has been several months of countless meetings on technology, on employee opportunities, on cost and capacity comparisons, what our future budgeting concerns will be, what any legal or contracting issues are that we could face, changes to the nine one one state and county system that would have adverse impacts on our future operations, conversations with the county Public Safety and Justice Services staff, as well as examining statewide and national trends in dispatch. There is no question in my mind that this is the right decision. It is a very difficult decision to make, and the transition will be bumpy, but it is the right decision. Now, if I can, I would like to turn it over to Chief Shap, although I believe he's having some connection um, problems. And I don't see him right now um, on the screen. So um, Chief Wagner, if you don't mind jumping in and getting started, please.
Well, excuse me, I'm running the meeting director, so.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, um, I don't mind having um, everyone make their presentations. But there has to be at least some point where council is going to have an opportunity to ask each of you individually. I know I have a number of questions already from, from what I've heard thus far. Has Chief Shap returned? But let's turn it over to Chief Wagner, and then we can just go from there.
Good evening. Was, was Chief Shap there? Was that him I heard? I'm not sure.
I, I'm sorry. I don't see him.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Oh. Madam Chair.
Is it possible to turn on video?
Can you?
Madam Chair, would you like me to continue?
Yes, please.
Yeah.
Can we, um, can whoever is monitoring the meeting, can we mute? Um, background noise? Please, thank you.
So, so I'll try and continue, and hopefully Chief Shap will be able to um, get back online here. Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, to, just to back up and give a little bit of history. We've, we've known and, and had information from different, our people throughout Cuyahoga County that this regionalization push was coming, you know, going back several years. You know, as many as four or five years ago, we um, did a pitch at the time to attempt to bring on Olmsted Township Police Department and dispatch for them uh, when they were being dispatched by CCOMs, Cuyahoga County. They, we actually gave them a pitch uh, two years in a row, and they ended up signing with uh, Strongsville, which is Southwest Dispatch. Fast forwarding to a little over a year ago, and we had been in talks and tried to bring on several people, several other departments to try and meet that, that five um, five different agencies to be able to retain our dispatch and, and bring on uh, you know, get the nine one one monies that the county is kind of holding uh, over everybody's head for consolidation. Um, you know, like the mayor and the safety director said, consolidation is, is nothing new. Uh, it's going to be very new to the city of North Olmsted in particular because we, when everybody went, all the area fire departments went to Westcom many years ago, North Olmsted uh, made a pretty good decision at that time to, to stay and continue to dispatch um, for themselves. Uh, and, and it's worked out very, very well. You know, times have changed over the last while, and when we, last year when we brought on Fairview Park, um, it was in, in to attempt to lure more cities over to try and retain dispatch. We've, I've had the, the, a chance to visit Chagrin Valley six or seven, eight times over the course of its existence. Uh, I've had to uh, the, the availability and to visit Strongsville Southwest Dispatch uh, several times since in several times since its existence, I've visited Westcom. We, we've looked at all of the options. And, you know, again, like the mayor and safety director said, our, our original goal was to maintain dispatch out of our building. I love our dispatchers, our employees. I think they do an absolutely fantastic job. I put them up against any dispatchers anywhere around. We, we have a great luxury of having them in our building. You know, it's a little bit different for the fire department because they don't work out of our building. But, but, you know, I've many of, I've known all of our veteran dispatchers, you know, since I started 24, going on 25 years ago. You know, so, so when we took on Fairview Park, the goal was to try and bring on other agencies as well. We thought maybe we had Brook Park at one time. They ended up signing with Southwest Dispatch. You know, it was the, the merger, the partnership that we established with Fairview Park. It went pretty well. Nothing goes without a bump in the road here and there. I think if you were to ask Fairview Park, and I don't want to speak for them, but I've been told by the, by the chief and the mayor, that, the police chief, that is, and the mayor, that they're very, very happy with the services that we've provided for them. Again, it was countless hours of, of work by many members of my staff, including Detective Sergeant Chuck Fiorito, Captain Morgan. But, you know, it's, it's one of the things that we realize that it's difficult to have everybody on the West Shore come over when we don't have, we have a working product of police and fire dispatch. We don't have a lot of the, we have the infrastructure. We have the ability to bring everybody on. We, we wanted Chagrin Valley to potentially build out. We wanted Strongsville to potentially build out, all maintaining it in our building. And as it turns out, those were, were not options for them. Again, it's, it's a very unpopular decision, especially in my building. I have, you know, 45 patrolmen and 15 to 20 dispatchers that if you ask every one of them if they'd rather continue doing business the way we're doing it or move to Chagrin Valley. Every single one of them unanimously is going to say, we want to keep doing business the way we're doing it. It's, it's, it's a very unpopular decision that, that we have to make. But we believe that it's the best move at this point in time for a multitude of reasons. Part of it is, you know, the money's tied to it. Many of it is equipment and technology upgrades that, that we would have to do, so on and so forth. So I don't want to drag this out anymore. We're happy, if, if Chief Shep is back on and he would like to say a few words, that's great. We would love to, hopefully, I think Detective Sergeant Fiorito is on here to, to handle a lot of the financials and technology questions that you may have. And we're happy to, to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Chief Shep, I saw you here. Is he gone? He was just here a minute ago.
He, he had to left, he's still having technical issues.
All right, so are we good for questions now? Or does anyone else have a few words to say from the administration? All right then. Were we getting a presentation from Chagrin Valley tonight? Is that my understanding that they were going to show us some?
Madam Chair, no. There's no formal presentation, not tonight, but Mr. DeCicco is here to answer questions and, and share information as, as needed by the committee.
Okay. I guess I'm going to begin by stating that while, while I understand that this has been months in the making, council just received the numbers on May 13th. Now, we were informed a couple of months ago that this might, this is going to be coming down the pipeline. But May 13th is when we first received the figures. And I had been asking for them a number of times. And I was told we needed to wait, wait, wait. So while everyone's had their meetings, and you've gone out to all of these facilities and you've spoken to all these people, council doesn't know all of those things. We don't know about the meetings that you've had and the things that you were doing behind the scenes. So when it comes before us and we're having this meeting and we're asked to pass something, that's where it comes by that it's being rushed. Now, I don't know what the deadline is on this or when we need to have a decision. But I can tell you right now that I'm not comfortable making one tonight. I'd like to hear more. I did have an opportunity to, to go over to our dispatch center here in North Olmsted. I also went out to Chagrin Valley last night. I met with Mr. DeCicco, who was very accommodating. He showed me around, answered a lot of my questions. But I have concerns with just, who's going to be taking reports on the weekends at the station? We don't have a weekend secretary. It's things like that. It's, will someone, we have new hires at the desk. Our dispatchers in North Olmsted, they know our residents. They know our streets. They know who has mental health issues. They're able to advise the officer. And I'm sure that other dispatchers in other cities can do the same thing. But there's something about our dispatchers here in North Olmsted. They know our residents. I'm comfortable with them taking our calls. I've spoken to officers in other communities who have utilized Chagrin Valley, who said that there's upwards of sometimes a three to four-minute delay in them getting their, I guess, if you will, their call. And to me, that's, that's kind of frightening if that can happen. Now, I, I, I'm sure that's been a constant thing, but I was somebody, when I first moved into this city, who needed 911. And I had six officers in front of my house. I was nobody but a new resident. I wasn't on council, I wasn't involved, nobody knew me here. We don't even have six cars on the road at any given time. So there's a lot of concern going in with our staffing of our officers and now with dispatch. We built out that area anticipating we were going to bring in more dispatchers with other cities. And now we have this space. And now we're saying we're going to get rid of our officers, or I'm sorry, our dispatchers, after somebody was quoted a year and a half ago, maybe two years, saying that it was best to have it in North Olmsted rather than sending it to somewhere else. And I believe that was a Cleveland.com article. So those are my comments tonight. And I will turn it over to our committee for any further questions. Mr. Glassburn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to, in light of the fact that we got a lot of documentation, make sure that I'm understanding some of the macros of this. So that since we have so many people on the line, hopefully we can get answers if I'm, if, if we're not understanding it correctly. So one of my first questions is, we have this $800-some thousand figure of Chagrin's cost, annual cost, separate from the five-year buy-in that's listed. Is that cost encompassing just North Olmsted Police and Fire? Or does that also include Fairview Park's services as well?
Director Schofield, could you mute your microphone? We're getting the, thank you.
Mr. Glassborne, I can, I can answer that. The $822,740 from Chagrin Valley, and that is the yearly fee to operate, is strictly the cost for North Olmsted. Fairview Park, I don't know what the Fairview Park number is, but that would be a separate number, not included in what you have.
So the budgeted amount that we have right now, or when we previous, prior to Fairview Park, let me, let me go back to this, was, I believe it was 912-some. When it was just North Olmsted Police, just North Olmsted Fire. So is the apples-to-apples number that 912, or maybe a little more with inflation of another two years, to this 800-some number? Is that the apples-to-apples where it's paying for North Olmsted Police Fire under our, our current system versus Chagrin?
That, that's correct. The apples-to-apples, North Olmsted-only police and fire dispatch was 912, right? And then that number went down a little bit when we took on the Fairview Park Police Department because our overall cost increased, but we're also billing them for some services. So our net budget was reduced a little bit. But the apples-to-apples comparison is the 912 to the 822.
Okay, because I, I think those numbers, and maybe the 912 should be given a, a increase based off of the last two years of pay raises or whatnot. Because I think that's the more instructive part. I think looking at our, if, if, if we are making a decision to go to Chagrin at some point, we need to look at it in terms of our police and fire, not us, comparing that to us with Fairview Park. Because the Fairview Park payment unfortunately is not just an element of its dispatch, but we also do prisoners, and it's, it's not a clean, it's not a clean line item per se, in a way that, I think. Thank you, clerk. So Mr. Fiorito, am I thinking of that right? That the 912 is referencing a previous fiscal year, not, not adjusted for the current wages of the staff that we have now?
It, that was our number prior to assimilating Fairview Park Police into our dispatch. It's probably fairly accurate right now also.
Right, but if you have 3%, or I forget what, what our exact increases were in terms of why, I know what our wage increases were, but our other contract costs and materials costs and whatnot. If you compound that for two more years since we've, we've integrated, that number is higher than 912. I just want to make sure that we're looking at, we have, we have the big picture numbers here in place.
Right, so we, we started dispatching for Fairview in, I believe, September of last year. So in the middle of last year, that 912 would have been an accurate number for us. So we're, we're about a year, a little less than a year in advance of this now.
Okay, so another year of salary escalation. We're probably talking another $20,000 to $25,000 on that line item. Fine. So, okay, so I understand that straightforward is about a $100,000 savings. I want to understand the 911 monies that we don't get if we don't consolidate with somebody. What is that amount, and when does that go away?
So that, that amount is, is approximately $25,000 a year. And what that encompasses is currently, everybody in the county, every PSAP in the county is required to participate in a county 911 system. Everybody has the exact same equipment and functionality. And currently, Cogga County pays all of the fees, maintenance. They supply all the hardware. They pay for all the AT&amp;T lines to support the 911 service countywide for everybody. Starting supposedly in July of this year, if a PSAP, which is our 911 dispatch center is a, considered a PSAP, it's a public safety answering point. If a PSAP is not a member of a regional dispatch center, and a regional dispatch center is defined as a center that dispatches for a minimum of five cities and does police and fire and EMS for those five cities. If you're not a member of a regional dispatch center, then that PSAP would be liable to start paying those fees. So for North Olmsted, we currently have three councils or three positions, desks, where we can answer 911 calls. And the breakdown of that would be around $25,000 a year to pay for equipment, maintenance, upkeep, troubleshooting, and then the AT&amp;T fees to have the telephone lines come in. Now, that is a yearly fee, that $25,000. We would also be required to then purchase any upgrades in equipment. So right now, we got all brand-new equipment in the beginning of the year. And actually, the county is refurbishing that already. So in the fall of this year, we're slated to get all new equipment again for all three of our positions. So normally, that's about a four- to five-year turnaround. But if we were to stay as a solo PSAP on our own in four to five years, in addition to this $25,000 yearly fee, we would have to pay for all of the hardware and equipment to be refurbished at that time.
Madam Chair, if I, if I get on a roll too long, please feel free to interrupt me. Thank you.
You're fine, just keep it rolling, it's good.
Okay. All right, so the, if I'm understanding right, so the $25,000 is lost items that the county's paying for on our behalf right now that we start paying for July 1st? Has there been any kind of extension of that? Or is it, is it definitely July 1st we start paying for that service?
So, and this, this is not a new change. This, this has been law for years. The county is just implementing it now. And they gave us a two-year notice saying this is going to happen. The answer to your question is, it's supposed to start July 1st. Realistically, we have been in talks with the county. And as long as we are making progress, that, that they recognize towards, moving towards a consolidated dispatch, they will not bill us, at least this year, for that. So I wouldn't expect any bills this year from them as long as we're on the path to some kind of consolidation with a regional dispatch center. If we were to tell them today, we're not interested in any regionalization and we are going to stay operating exactly the way they, we are right now, they would come to us in July and say, start paying.
Okay. So, well, we're certainly having discussions right now. So it sounds like we're considering it. Whether we do it or not, we'll see. Okay, so you mentioned, Mr. Mr. Fiorito, that there's the $25,000 annually, then there's the other equipment that has to be upgraded every four to five years. Give us a brief summary of what that equipment is and how much that costs. And that's currently paid for by the county or state funds through the county?
So you, you kind of cut out on my end. I didn't hear the middle of your question there.
So if I understood you correctly, there's the $25,000 of what I'll call fixed cost services. But then there's equipment that has to be periodically replaced that had been previously paid for by the county with funds it's getting from somewhere else, the state, I don't know where. So what is that equipment that is outside of the $25,000 annual? How much, you know, briefly, what is it? How much does it cost? How often does it cost?
Okay, so the equipment is, it's basically computer equipment. It would be monitors, three monitors, one for each desk, three computers for each desk, probably three new phones, that's usually part of the package. There is a keypad that... There is a keypad that interfaces with the computer monitor that functions. There may be cabling that's included in that. It's, it's basically a computer workstation is, is the short version of all that equipment. And like I said, we are, we are slated, everybody in the county is slated to have all of that equipment replaced this fall. So we would not be liable to purchase or pay for that equipment upgrade for another four or five years from now. Currently, all of that money, all of that stuff, along with the yearly fees and maintenance, it's all paid for by the county and the county pays for all of that using 911 cellphone tax money that they get from the state.
Okay, but that computer equipment, if we have to buy some of those things over the next five years, if we continue doing what we're doing, what's a ballpark idea, what that costs?
So a ballpark idea for three workstations is probably around $24,000.
Okay.
It's a, it's about 8,000, 8,000 a workstation.
And they have a life expectancy of four to five years, is what you're saying?
Same as any computer workstation that, you know, everybody else has in the city, yes.
Okay. Um, okay, well, again, thank you very much for answering these questions. So, um, I was, had the benefit of going to two of the tours of Chagrin. And one of the topics that came up was that, again, forgive my lay description of this, that Chagrin provides in effect a safety forces IT department that manages this, that is not a function we currently have or that you, Mr. Furrito, are doing. Is that an accurate description or what's the, what's, what's the status of that?
So, and Nick, Nick can be more specific, but I believe he has around eight full-time employees, give or take a couple, who are dedicated to IT support for his dispatch centers. PSAP, Public Safety IT Support is a very different field of IT support than your standard IT support. So in the city of North Olmsted, we have Eric and Doug. Eric does a fabulous job with the city network. I work with him all the time. We, in the police department, we are required by LEEDs, which is our, the state agency that oversees how we function, to maintain our own computer network and all of our own infrastructure for computers and phones and that. I do most of that, but I'm, I'm a police officer. I'm not an IT person. I, the day-to-day stuff, I can, I can usually figure out. I'm to the point where if something's not working, I can usually diagnose that and then I know who to call, whether it's Eric or maybe it's our vendor. So we use TAC, T A C Computer, as our CAD vendor. And we have a service agreement with them and they do a lot of our IT repairs and functions because the bulk of what we do is through our CAD system. But having a dedicated IT staff to manage is paramount to keeping a, a dispatch center functional. We can do it because we're very small. It's, it's us, North Olmsted Police Fire and Fairview Park Police. It's something that I can manage, but I will tell you that nearly every day that I am off, I get phone calls from dispatch that something's not working, there's a hiccup, something's frozen. Every day that I do go into the office, I always have something to look at in dispatch to fix, to tweak, to update. It's, it's really something that there needs to be dedicated people handling that. If we were to move and, and be able to bring in any other cities, it would far exceed the hours that I have available to do that. So with Nick in Chagrin Valley, he has a full-time dedicated staff, that that is all they do. They understand the needs, the IT needs of a dispatch center. They're all certified through LEEDs to be able to work on that equipment because you have to be certified and approved by LEEDs to be able to even come in and work on any of the equipment. So that is a huge benefit that they have that we do not hear.
So just very briefly, what is LEEDs? Who, who are LEEDs?
So, so LEEDs, um, the FBI nationwide dictates how all police departments throughout the country are required to function and what rules they have to follow. The FBI disseminates all those rules and regulations down to every state. In Ohio, Ohio, through the Ohio State Highway Patrol, they have a division that's called LEEDs. It's the Law Enforcement Automated Data Systems. LEEDs personnel, who are Ohio State Highway Patrol employees, they are the ones who physically oversee every law enforcement agency in the state of Ohio. And they disseminate all the rules and regulations that the FBI pushes out for everyone to follow. The rules that come out are very strict and specific. Like I mentioned in my, a few minutes ago, one of the big things that they mandate is internet and computer network security. Every law enforcement agency is audited by LEEDs at least every two years on strictly our network, our connections, our computers, how things are connected, how firewalls are set up, how switches are set up. And they physically come to our building and look at all that stuff and do intrusion testing and virus testing and malware testing. But that's a regular thing that they come out and do routinely. And you have to remain in compliance with all of their rules and regulations to be able to function as a law enforcement agency. If you violate their rules and regulations or aren't compliant, they have the ability to terminate all of your computer and network connections, which in effect would make you not, not able to function as a law enforcement agency.
Okay, thank you. So, um, and again, just briefly, Mr. Furrito, I believe your title is Sergeant into Detective, what do you do when you are not being police IT?
So I, I also oversee all of the polygraphs. I do all of our polygraphs for our department, which on hiring, that's a lot. I think last year I did 75 polygraphs for our department. I part-time supervise the detective bureau when Sergeant Barrett is not there. I get involved in felony cases still. I'm the only accident reconstructionist on the department. So if we have a major or fatal accident, that falls on me to investigate and look at. I, I could occupy all of my time doing police work, investigations, cases, polygraphs. But I have to divide it up and also do the IT type work because there is no one else there to do it. And we have never had a dedicated IT person in the police department to manage or do any of that stuff. As you can imagine, every computer that we have, we have 24 cars that have computers in them. Every one of them needs updated and rebooted every once in a while. And they need looked at to make sure the antivirus and all of that is up to snuff and working correctly and updated. We have 40-some computers in our police department for all of our desks. Every one of them need looked at and updated and make sure that they're functioning correctly. There's, there is a ton of IT work. Making sure the phone system works, our radio systems, I take care of all the radios. We have over 100 police radios between the officers and the car radios and dispatch. All of those things are electronic, they're all computers, they all need tender loving care once in a while.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Furrito. Madam Chair, one, I tell you, you raised your hand, this is your committee.
I just, I just wanted to stop you really quick. Mr. Furrito, Sergeant, 75 polygraphs, was that just for North Olmsted employees?
Those were primarily for police and fire applicants.
But not for outside agencies? This is just internal to North Olmsted?
There, there are probably for outside agencies, I might have done about 10 or 12 for outside agencies. The majority of those are all North Olmsted. Either North Olmsted criminal cases or North Olmsted pre-employment polygraphs. And most of them are the pre-employment polygraphs.
Okay, and then as far as accident reconstruction, that's not done outside, it's all internal to the city?
We handle, North Olmsted Police handles all of their accidents. Regardless of what the level of severity is.
I, I just, I mean, you do an awful lot for the department. I just kind of want to make sure that you're staying, that, you know, that we're keeping your talents here and not regionalizing you, if you will.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not going anywhere.
Okay.
To that point, Madam, Madam Chair, it sounds like by not, if we don't have dispatch locally, we may lose some boots on the ground here, but what I was trying to get at is, do we also regain in effect, not to be too personal, but Sergeant Furrito? Because it sounds like maybe we get part of his time back if we join one of these groups as well. Madam Chair, I see that Chief Shep got, got on and I see Councilman Kelly, so I'll yield for the moment to let, let you take the floor.
Chief Shep actually has to jump up and down because I do not see him. Oh, there he is. He's sitting in the dark.
This is the only thing that I can find to get a signal and I apologize. I'm sorry that it took me this long to get on, but I, I'm here.
You're here, it's all that matters.
Yes, and I would just like to add, if, if I can, Madam Chair, Chuck, I think Chuck's being a little humble because he does a lot of stuff for us as well. And without Chuck, a lot of our operations would come to, at least be slowed down.
Chief, did you, did you want to add any other comments regarding the, the move to Chagrin Valley?
Sure, I would respectfully request that the, the North Olmsted City Council endorse this move to CBD. This isn't a knee-jerk reaction. Consolidation has been something talked about in the state and in the country for well over 20 years now. Not only at, at our very local level, but at a regional level, a county level. There are agencies and organizations throughout the state that have regional and countywide dispatches and they function and they function very well. If this was a thing that was not viable, you wouldn't see the proliferation of these communication centers, not only in Ohio, but across the country. So I would humbly ask that you strongly consider us moving to CBD. I, I personally live in an area and like you, Councilwoman Williamson, we had to call 911 one, one time and it was a regional dispatch center. And we didn't even know the, the response time. They got here so quick. That's how, how great they operated in my community. So the, the issues that many people bring up concerning regional dispatch, you know, the, the local knowledge, I would, I would venture to guess that if our dispatchers were to go to one of these regional centers, they could use their knowledge and experience to ask the same questions that our people are asking. For example, it was brought up yesterday. Our dispatchers know, if somebody says, I, I'm at the Starbucks, they would say, well, which Starbucks are you at? I'm at a Shell station. Which Shell, Shell station are you at? Well, they would take that same knowledge and use it in reverse if they were to go to a CBD or someplace else and have somebody say, well, I'm at the McDonald's. Well, which McDonald's are you at? They know that. And these are teaching points. We can teach people to learn this. Now the question then becomes, how fast can we impart that knowledge? And that's always the challenge, is the training curve. But the, the, there's, there's a lot of emotion in this discussion. And I would just ask that the emotion be downplayed and that we just, like Councilman Glassburn said, get to the facts. And, and that's what I would ask for.
Thank you, Chief. Are there any other comments or questions? Councilman Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Is the city getting another federal grant this year for over a million dollars toward the police and for dispatching? Anybody? Okay. I would think somebody should.
Councilman, I, I'm not, I'm not understanding the question, get another million dollars for dispatch this year?
So there was a grant from the federal government for 2021 and 2022. One million, $141,501. Do we be getting that money?
And I don't, I don't, I can't, I can't speak to that. I don't have an answer for you right now.
So Madam Chair, I believe I understand the question. The money that Mr. Kelly's asking about are, are ARPA funds, which included the two additional police officers, but a host of other things, including that upgrade to our website and ability to take payments, forms, et cetera. But there were a whole, a host of other items. So that, that's the ARPA budget. That's what the 1.6 or so million from the federal government.
So can some of these funds be used to continue our dispatch?
Mayor, Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. To the councilman's question, we would have to look to see what the regulations are regarding that. If you remember when we were before council asking for you to consider the proposals that we had a couple of months ago that we brought to you with that first tranche of ARPA money. There, it is very restrictive as to what you can use it for. So we could look into that and, and we could find out for you what the regulations would be for that.
Go ahead, Mr. Kelly.
Sorry?
Mr. Lindbergh's microphone is on. I just wanted to.
I think all of council might be interested to find out if any of these funds can be used for our dispatch center. It sounds to me like there's probably another year before this consolidation has to happen. And I'm certain, we're, we're willing to spend $150,000 here for a consultant, we're willing to spend money here. We have, we have dispatchers in our city that know our city, that know our police officers, that know the surrounding communities, they know the sounds, they know the people. They know the inflection in their voices. If there's an issue, I think we need to try just a little bit harder to try to save this here.
Are there any, Mr. Lindbergh?
Yeah, just kind of switching topics slightly. As it relates Chief Shep to Westcom, I know that was one of the parts that we looked at. Just assuming if we did keep dispatch as it currently is, you know, fires with Westcom. I understand from the administration, from previous conversations with other, other cities in the area that are, are looking at their dispatch options as well. options as well. What would happen if one of those cities moved out of Westcom? What are those implications to our fire dispatching? I think the mayor is raising her hand.
Madam Chairwoman, to the councilman, our fire is dispatched by North Olmstead, so it doesn't have a, Westcom does not have any implications on the way that our fire...
I'm sorry. My apologies. My apologies. I didn't frame that right. So, if we were, one of the options was to look at going to Westcom, if we were to go to Westcom, would there be implications of them pulling it? Because I know, I know that was the other option that we looked at in addition to Strongsville, was Westcom for their fire. Would that, assuming that we couldn't keep dispatch long-term with us, and we went to somewhere on the west side, would there be any risks involved in that of other organizations pulling out? And then, what would that mean?
I'm sure there's always a risk of an organization pulling out and going to another center. My concern with that would be, one, cost. Obviously, moving our costs, our dispatch operations over to Westcom would incur an additional cost to the city. Since we're already doing dispatch here, we would essentially be paying for two dispatch centers, one to dispatch the fire department, and one to dispatch the police department. And then there's the added safety factor, which I call it, when our firefighters are out on the road and on a call, and they need a police officer, they call right to our dispatch center, and they're talking to the same people who would dispatch a police officer. So if we need our brothers in blue to say, "Hey, we need some help," the dispatcher, all she has to do is turn to either her neighboring dispatcher, or flip the switch itself and say, "Hey, have the police officers respond to the scene." So I think having us move to Westcom, while it might be a short-term option, I think ultimately, the cost and a little bit of a safety factor there would outweigh that move.
Mr. Glassburn?
So, Mr. Councilman Lindbergh brings up, you know, a big topic, which is, you know, what is the, what are the, our specific legislation is considering Chagrin, but this has to be weighed against what we can do on our own, and what are our alternatives? There were, council receives some information about Westcom today, and components of what Westcom would need to do to potentially serve as a PSAP for North Olmstead. But where, I mean, what timing are we talking about in terms of that coming together? I know I'm asking the wrong people, the people that we should ask that is Westcom, they're not part of this. But we've, as the West Shore talked about this topic for a long time, and so, you know, getting something from Westcom today was a little surprising, because we hadn't gotten anything when we tried to initiate this conversation before. So, it, there's equipment and other costs for a potential Westcom option that I'd like to understand better. But are there other steps? Are there other things that have to be certified? Is that LEEDs program that Mr. Fiorito talked about involved? What other things does Westcom need to do besides buying stuff? And what are, when can those things happen? What do those things cost?
So... Okay, so I can probably address a couple of those. The first thing I'd like to point out is, regardless of what decision council decides on, stay as we are, go to Chagrin Valley, go to Westcom, go to Strongsville, yeah, almost an absolute priority is keeping police and fire dispatched from the same room. We see this now, North Olmstead made the best decision when Westcom was created, that separated all the fire departments from all the police departments. So, and we see this firsthand now, because we have always dispatched police and fire from our building. So when a caller calls in and they get a dispatcher, there are many times that they need police and fire. They need both services. And the caller might not necessarily know what they're asking for. If they're involved in an accident, they may call and say, "Hey, I'm in an accident, I need a police car." But our dispatchers know, "Yeah, but your airbags went off, and we're going to send an ambulance." Or, "The car's leaking gas, and we also have to send an ambulance and a fire truck." That is one dispatcher dispatching police and fire to that same event. What we see with taking over Fairview Park police only, and Fairview Park Fire is still currently dispatched by Westcom, is there's a huge disconnect when a caller calls in, and if they happen to come to our department first, to the police department, and our dispatchers determine that they really need police or fire and EMS, then we're disconnecting that call and caller, and transferring them over to Westcom, only to find out when Westcom dispatches police and fire, or fire and EMS, that all of a sudden, they also need a policeman. So now that call's got to be transferred back to us again. And it's a huge game of telephone and a huge delay in service. Nobody who runs a consolidated dispatch center anywhere has police and fire separated. They are always, for each city, they are always together. And that is, that is a huge consideration that needs to be maintained. As far as Mr. Glassburn, you asked about Westcom. So, Westcom, yes, they only dispatch fire and EMS right now. They have never dispatched police. They are not capable of dispatching police. And one of the biggest hurdles that they do have, in order to be able to dispatch police, is getting LEEDs certified. So I will tell you that when we brought Fairview Park Police over to North Olmstead, Fairview Park Police used to dispatch for themselves. They were LEEDs certified, compliant, and audited, as we were. And to get LEEDs approval and go through all the steps was easily a three-month process to bring Fairview Park, a compliant agency, over to North Olmstead, another compliant agency. I couldn't even tell you what the timeframe is for Westcom to be a startup agency and to get LEEDs for the very first time. And currently, the way they are set up, they wouldn't even qualify to get certified for LEEDs. Their biggest downfall is that their entire infrastructure, their computer network and all of that, is 100% reliant on the hospital. The hospital IT department manages their IT, their infrastructure and their network is joined to the hospital. That is not LEEDs compliant. Westcom would have to build a brand-new computer network, isolated from the hospital, maintained and supervised separate from the hospital, before they would ever get LEEDs certification to begin dispatching for a law enforcement agency.
Mr. Kelly, oh, sorry.
No, go, I was going to say, I'll yield to Mr. Kelly for now.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Currently, is the county paying for our 911 stations?
Yes, currently, Cogga County pays for all of the 911 equipment, maintenance, upkeep, and all of the AT&amp;T 911 lines that all PSAPs in the county use. They pay for everybody right now.
Do we have a contract with them?
It's not a contract. It's just, maybe six years ago or so, state law mandated that everybody in the county used the same county 911 system. And so, Cogga County went around to every PSAP and delivered, installed, and configured the 911 equipment for everybody at their cost. So there was never a formal contract or that. But we don't have a choice. As a dispatch center in the county, we have to use the equipment that the county provides.
Thank you.
Perhaps someone can answer a question for me. Now, I know that Westcom is in St. John's, is it? And isn't Chagrin Valley in Metro Hospital? So, they're both in hospitals. What's the difference?
So, the difference is that Chagrin Valley and Nick have an isolated computer network. And any of the council members that went out and toured Chagrin Valley, we all went into that back room, where the air-conditioned room with all the servers and radio and computer files and stuff in that back room, that is everything that is needed, infrastructure and computer network-wide to run the dispatch center, is completely isolated from the hospital. The hospital IT never has to or needs to touch any of that equipment. Nick and his staff completely maintain all of that equipment and keep it up and running, isolated from the hospital.
Well, I didn't, I didn't get to see the separate room yesterday when I went. I wasn't ready for that. So, the only thing I saw were the desks and the room, and that was it. So...
I'm sorry you missed that portion of it.
Well, yeah, so am I.
Yes, but that is...
It was at six o'clock, and I couldn't make a tour like that at six o'clock.
Right. So that is the big difference. So actually, Chagrin Valley actually has three physical locations. They're all set up similar.
Fiorito, should Mr. DeCicco be, speaking of his company, I mean, you're doing a lot of PR for him right now. I think that, I don't want to regionalize you any more than you already are. So, I think...
I'm more than happy to yield to Mr. DeCicco.
I have a question to the law director. What happens with our contract with the Fairview Park Police Department?
We will negotiate with the city of Fairview Park to terminate that contract. I mean, they understand the situation as well. I mean, it's not, it's not one that would, I believe, in any way inhibit the city of North Olmstead to be able to move forward. It's not a permanent contract. We have, they're familiar with the same discussion that we're having right here. I don't know what they're going to do. They don't have dispatching amenities themselves. If we're not, we're not in a position to be able to continue to dispatch on our own right, certainly, we're not going to be in a position to be able to dispatch for them. So, we'll explore the discussion with Fairview Park to terminate that agreement.
Okay, so is it, could we possibly be paying out because we're breaking the contract?
No, I don't believe that's the case.
Just a question.
I understand.
Doing my due diligence here.
Nope, no, no offense taken. Glad you asked.
Madam Chair?
Okay, thank you. Yes, Mr. Lindbergh?
Just as a follow-on that related to Fairview, would there be any kind of requirements where we'd have to continue dispatch for a certain period of time until they find a new dispatch, or?
Is that question for me, Mr. Lindbergh?
Either you or...
I'll go back and I'll pull the, I haven't pulled the contract in a bit here and read it, but I can go back and take a look at it.
It looks like Chief Wagner raises his hand, Madam Chair. He may be able to answer.
I'll step out.
Go ahead, Chief.
Thank you. So, we have been meeting regularly with our web chiefs. All, we've actually had one of our web chiefs meetings at Chagrin Valley. This is a discussion that's happening throughout all of the web committees, communities. We just happen to be on the forefront. If I had to give my best educated guess, I would say that if and when North Olmstead decides to move to a consolidated dispatch center such as Chagrin Valley, I would strongly imagine that all the other web cities would too. Some of the things that we looked at when we looked at Chagrin Valley was, and part of the reason that we're moving when we are, is right now, all of our dispatch radio consoles are outdated, which I brought up to in budget hearings about the need for new dispatch radios if we were going to stay and maintain doing our own dispatch. So right now, our radios are outdated and unsupported. It's between three and four hundred thousand to replace those radios that we would need to do very, very soon if we continue to dispatch for ourselves in the future. Our envision is if and when we move to Chagrin Valley, that they would not start dispatching services for us until January 1st of 23. So this is not an immediate transfer of dispatch services. It would be in the start of 2023 at the earliest. And, you know, so we've extended additional monies that we would have to spend on these radio consoles. I do think that Detective Sergeant Fiorito, he's very impressive to listen to him talk. He does, he's very humble. He handles so much throughout my building and the fire department's building, and he is a wealth of knowledge that I wish I had ten more of him. He does handle all of the police MDTs, the mobile data terminals in the vehicles, our radios, and so on and so forth. Part of the contract of moving to Chagrin Valley is that they would handle that stuff for us. So there's, when I say that we did our due diligence in looking at all of our options, that's why Chagrin Valley rose to the top for us. When we looked at Westcom, Westcom doesn't have, the way it was explained to us, does not have the ability to dispatch police and fire out of the same room. They're limited on space. I did, you guys got all the same information that I got, that they have space for up to fifteen dispatch positions, but I don't believe they're all in the same room. So, again, there's lots of behind-the-scenes investigating that the committee, not only me and Detective Fiorito, Chief Shep, did along for this over the last several months. So I hope that helps answer a few questions.
I think so. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'm not sure if my camera's working or not, because it doesn't appear on my own screen. But this is Glassburn again.
Certainly sounds like you.
Okay. So, I want to follow up on that radio question. So that three or four hundred thousand to replace the radios, are you saying that if we go with Chagrin's proposal, that we get radios included in the price? Or they would handle it as in Sergeant Fiorito wouldn't handle it? What are you saying that there?
Go ahead, Chief.
Please go ahead.
Thank you. So, the radios that we would be buying for that three to four hundred thousand dollars, the last time we got a quote for the radios, I believe it was three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And that's for the AVTEC radios, and I don't want to get into, go all Chuck Fiorito on you and give you a bunch of stuff. But the AVTEC radios is what we would be purchasing. Now, these are what I would consider that they're very capable for what we could do to maintain our own dispatch, North Olmstead Police, North Olmstead Fire, Fairview Park Police. But if we were to bring everybody on, we would need better radios. I think one of the things that Westcom was quoting was the AVTEC radios. They don't have the ability to do a core connection with those radios. One of the things that Westcom doesn't have is redundancy. If Westcom Dispatch Center goes down, they've got no backup. If North Olmstead, if we continue to do dispatch for our own and we go down, we've got no backup. Detective Fiorito started to mention the fact that Chagrin Valley currently operates three different locations. If one of their locations goes down, they can transfer dispatch services to the, one of the other two remaining locations. It's happened. They have the redundancy that we can't offer in North Olmstead. And when we get into the radios, and I can let Detective Fiorito or Nick DeCicco talk on the radios, but the Motorola 7500s are a much more capable Motorola radio system that Chagrin Valley uses. They're way more expensive. And it's not something that we would be purchasing if we decide to keep our dispatch in North Olmstead. We would not be purchasing those. So we get, that would all be managed by Chagrin Valley. It's not something that Chuck Fiorito's... going to have to do if we consolidate.
So, Madam Chair, I want to get back to the the very narrow question of of those those radios. Do we end up spending some amount of money for other radios if we go with Chagrin? Or are they included in the price? Or what's what's that?
They are included in the price. We will no longer need our dispatch councils as we as we have them now. So if we if we decide that that it's best to keep North Olmsted dispatching out of our building, we buy those radios, and we have them, you know, for us to use until we we continue to do business the way we are now or move to a consolidated dispatch down the road.
So if I looked at it correctly, the Chagrin proposal has a equipment buy-in of 450 or so thousand dollars, is staying the way we are in effect, an equipment buy-in of the 300,000 to 400,000 for these radios plus something else, or just the radios?
Detective Fiorito, can you answer that? He cut out on me, and I don't know if you caught that or?
So if we were to stay the way we are, dispatching just us, North Olmsted and Fairview Park, our cost to replace radios in our dispatch center is is around the mid 300,000 range. Going to Chagrin Valley, they have a buy-in, a capital cost buy-in that helps fund all of their capital expenditures. But we would not pay anything to have the use of the radios that they currently have and use. So and I also want to point out, since you brought up radios, these radios that we're talking about for dispatch, they are strictly the dispatch radios. I don't want council to be surprised, in the next year or two, the radios that the police officers use, their walkie-talkies and the car radios, those will need to be replaced and or upgraded in the next two years. And that's a completely separate issue from what we're talking about here. But that goes for police and fire. But what we're talking about, these radios we're talking about here today are strictly the radios in dispatch. And going to Chagrin Valley, there is no cost, no additional cost to start using the radio systems that are already in place at Chagrin Valley.
But again, if I if I'm trying to make a simplified apples to apples, our buy-in for Chagrin, I just looked at one of the documents, is 468, 468,000 for capital. If you're telling me the radios are 330, 350, you tell me the number, is there anything else in addition to those radios that are in effect, capital buying costs we must do that are different from what we would have to do from Chagrin to stay the way we are?
Yes. So on on the probably the sheet that you're looking at off of there, if we were to stay the way we are right now, we would have to replace those radios. We would also need to get a second file server or domain controller. And I think that's on that list for about $25,000 because we have no backup right now. We would need a secondary generator connection, which we don't have, the power our building, and that's itemized on there. And then we would also look at at the top of that list, personnel to manage, supervise, and do the IT work for dispatch. So those capital costs are going to easily match or exceed what the capital for Chagrin Valley is.
So why were these concerns never brought up in budget meetings? That you needed a second file server or a secondary generator? I mean, these things were never asked for. They haven't been asked for in 12 years since I've been on council. So why all of a sudden are is this coming up as as being additional equipment? I mean, it's like, you didn't ask for it last year or the year before.
So those are those are all part of our, I believe, our five-year plan, and they've been budgeted to be coming up. So we just replaced our our main file server, which was $25,000 or so the previous year. And we've been doing infrastructure upgrades to allow us to add these other redundancies. We have backups to our file server, but that's different than having a redundant system. And as technology increases and our reliance on technology increases, without redundancies and redundancies across the board, redundancies in computer networks, and power availability, in radio services, in telephone telephones, all of those things, we don't have redundancy for, but we're more and more relying on technology. And if any of those systems were to fail, then we can't function any longer. And those are things that have been changing through the years. And we're now to a point where if we want to continue doing what we're doing, we have to prepare for those things and have those redundancies in place.
Thank you.
So so again, to be absolutely clear, the I understand I said apples to apples. What I'm trying to compare is us preserving exactly the services we have now. I understand there are deficiencies of those services. We don't have redundancies of power, of additional call centers, of additional IT connections and whatnot. But to sustain what we have now at the level we are now requires the 350 for the radios. So our absolute minimum cost to preserve our our current level of service is 350. The buy-in is 468 for Chagrin, acknowledging that Chagrin provides a bunch of other things that we don't have currently.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Heeman. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. So my curiosity is two things. Yes, I, you know, I would like to keep dispatch here. I think we all do. But in the longer term vision, what I would like to know, and we probably won't know today, perhaps, you know, another meeting or some information to come later. So what we're talking about is trying to preserve dispatch right now here today, and it's 300,000 or 400,000. You know, there's a deadline by which we have to have other cities join us, or we have to go somewhere else, right? So while we can put a Band-Aid on staying the way that we are for right now, I'd like to hear some discussion about what are those deadlines by which we have to pull into our circle for other cities? Is there an interest to do that? And what are those costs? And will we be shutting ourselves out of the box in another 12 months or 24 months, and we will just have created a bigger problem for us? So yes, I understand keeping it here right now. But then what is the larger implication in a 12 to 24 month down the road? If anybody can tell me anything about that? Thank you, Madam Chair.
So the the first piece I'd like to address is the the money piece. To stay here and buy our own radios, this AVTEC radio system, it would function perfectly fine the way we operate right now. And if we use that for two years and then decided to go to a regional dispatch center, that equipment would be completely useless. As far as getting other cities to come to us, again, I think that's everyone's ideal is for us to maintain dispatch here. But really, the only way to do that is to become that regional dispatch center and have the minimum of five cities come to us. Now, we have the physical space to do that. But in my budgeting, for us to be able to do that, we're talking close to $2 million in equipment to be able to build a dispatch center with the computers and and radios and other equipment and redundancies to be able to get those other cities to come here. So that 200,000 or $2 million in infrastructure divided by the five or six cities, I don't know that. And and I'm not part of those conversations with the other mayors or councils, if they'd be willing to chip in their one quarter or one fifth of that cost to come here. And then the piece that isn't included in that is hiring the management and IT staff in it. That would be in addition to that $2 million capital cost.
May I have one follow up?
These are just your estimates, correct? And yes, you may. But I just want to ask that question.
So that that is a very complete budget that I put together. In the beginning of the year, we were very much looking at soliciting and bringing all four or five of the Westside cities into our building and creating a regional dispatch center. We are the only existing dispatch center on the west side of Cleveland that has the physical space to accommodate all of the dispatchers and put in enough desks. But that those budget numbers, that $2 million or so, that is what it would actually cost to build that out.
Councilwoman Heeman, did you have a additional question?
I do. Just a short one. Thank you, Madam Chair. So I think that, you know, if council will recall, we did, you know, were led in a direction by previous administration to the place of we were going to have this great dispatch center, right? Which is why we have the physical space, because we voted for those improvements. Unfortunately, that work effort wasn't continued and put forward. And so we're kind of, here we are today, right? We have space, but we didn't, you know, weren't told any of the rest of this, that there were deadlines, that we needed four more cities, that these these things were absolute. So I feel a little disappointed in that, that we were not told. But however, being where we are today, I don't know how to attract then, how would we, and if somebody else can answer, find those other cities to to join with us in short order, with a 2 million or 3 million or 1 million, whatever it is, capital outlay, in order to meet the timeline and marching orders set forth by the county and the state. So it's not that we don't want to keep it here. My question is, how do we meet those imposed deadlines, right? Either we have to find the money, and it's not $300,000 or 500,000, it's much more. And then what are the true deadlines? How do we march that forward if that's the intent? And, you know, maybe finance could jump in on that because it's a big number. So so those are my questions and concerns is the bigger picture, long term. Thanks.
Chief Wagner. You're unmute, Chief.
Sorry, I apologize. So so again, I think we all envisioned that the the best thing would have been to get everybody over in North Olmsted. Again, like I said, when we pitched Olmsted Township, you know, Fairview Park, it worked out as a as a as a benefit for the partnership for us for going on, you know, our first year of business here. Again, we really thought Brook Park was interested at one time. We were we were given the sales pitch, really, really wanted to bring it on. You know, the staffing issues, you know, we're me trying to hire dispatchers is a very, very difficult task. You know, I've hired some what I would consider a rock star from Lorraine County 911. She's wonderful. Obviously, our veteran dispatchers that have been with us for a long time are fantastic. Some of the new people we've brought in, you know, I brought in two, two 18-year-old girls that just graduated high school. Happy to give them an opportunity and to get them, you know, on board. It's hiring and finding a good qualified dispatcher has been a very big struggle for us. We're in competition with these regional dispatch centers for employees. We're in competition with Strongsville. We're in competition with Chagrin Valley to hire a good dispatcher. Talking at the web chiefs meetings, North Ridgeville can't can't find good dispatchers. So they dispatch for themselves for their police only because their fire goes to Westcom. They dispatch during the day and afternoon shifts. And then at night, they don't have dispatch. They transfer over to Lorraine County 911. Lakewood's having trouble hiring dispatchers. Everybody in the West Shore is having trouble hiring hiring dispatchers. And, you know, unfortunately, and, you know, our pay that we currently offer in North Olmsted for our dispatchers is several dollars less an hour than some of these other regional dispatch centers. So, you know, for us to be competitive and bring on good people has been a challenge. You know, it's, we've been able to find some people. Training has been an issue. We budgeted $35,000 this year for overtime, and we've already gone through that amount of money. It, like I said, every single day is is a difficult struggle just to maintain our staffing, which obviously is imperative. It's the safety of everybody who's involved there. But it is something to consider with with us trying to bring on additional employees on top of the IT or the management aspect of that we would need if we wanted to bring other cities on here. And that would be handled through a regional dispatch center if we decided to go. Thank you.
So Chief, if if we had other cities, if we brought in other cities, wouldn't their dispatchers come here too?
It's always an option. You know, yes, we would need this. We would need to find them somewhere for sure. It's my hopes that if and if and when we do transition to a regional dispatch center, I hope, and I know Captain Peters from the fire department and Chief Shep and everybody involved, I I hope and pray that all 15 or 20 of my dispatchers go to that regional center wherever it may be. Do I think that's a reality and an option? Absolutely not. You know, I know there's several of our dispatchers that are not going to go to Chagrin Valley if we make that transition. I know there's some that will. You know, I've, when we've discussed options, it might not be the best for dispatcher A or dispatcher B personally. But, you know, we've, it's been our task, the safety committee, to to come up with the best option for everybody involved. So yes, we would, if we were to try and bring other cities on. But again, it's, it's difficult sales pitch for us when these these regional dispatch centers like Chagrin Valley, like Southwest Dispatch, so forth, exist. And, you know, they have a very, very good working product that we and with these redundancies that we can't offer, we don't have. So so there's, it's difficult to make that sales pitch for people to come on board.
And Madam Chair, when you ask about bringing in the other dispatchers?
Who's talking? Who's talking? Okay.
Sergeant Fiorito. Sorry. To bring in other dispatchers, when we brought Fairview Park Police over to us, we got zero dispatchers from them because they had none. Their police officers did all of their dispatching.
Okay, that's that's like a scenario. That's like a unique situation.
Well, not totally unique. So Westlake Police, they have full-time dispatchers 24/7. Bay Village and Rocky River, they do not have full-time dispatchers 24/7. Their police officers still dispatch for them on nights and weekends. So there
But they have part-time. So they have part-time dispatchers.
They have some part-time dispatchers, but not enough to cover all of their shifts.
Okay, this is not a debate, Sergeant. I only asked a question to the chief. So I appreciate your input, but I want to keep the meeting rolling. Thanks. Are there any other questions from committee or council? And seeing Mr. Limbert.
I'm sorry, I just one last question, because I think this was brought on by Ms. Heeman when she was asked about sort of the the milestones of the timelines. And we have Mr. De Ciso here. Like what, and I think you might have mentioned this in a presentation, but what are like the capacities for onboarding that you have and the timelines for bringing cities on to Chagrin Valley? Like, are there certain windows and a certain amount of cities that you can bring on at at different points? different points or different years?
May I speak, Madam?
Yes.
Thank you, thanks for having me. So our normal process is anywhere between four and six months. Once we have signed legislation, there is a process. Are we able to take all five cities on the same exact day? Absolutely not. So right now, it's a first come, first served basis. So the first city would come in, we'd work on their onboarding, and as other cities fall in line, you know, we would do that two to four months, keeping the sequence. Just keep in mind, like you heard the Sergeant speak of, not only is Leeds a minimum of a 90-day process to change everything over, but so is AT&amp;T with all the telephone lines. It's a process that just can't be done overnight.
Thank you. Mr. Glassburn, I think you had indicated that-
Yes, yes, Madam Chair, thank you.
I see this little hand, but I don't see you. Oh, there you are.
It's wishful thinking that I've disappeared. So, so there are a couple of issues. You know, I've asked a lot of financial questions, that's my expertise, but there's a couple of areas that I've not asked questions about that I do have interest in, and I don't want to belabor this too long, I know we've been going a long time, which is, the first is, perhaps should have been the first question, which is the quality question. What are we getting? What is the, if we have a North Olmsted dispatcher go to Chagrin Valley versus a North Olmsted dispatcher staying in North Olmsted, so that it's the same human being with the same skillset, what are the differences of the response times, or are there differences when somebody makes that 911 call to each call center?
Mr. De Cisco, would you like to answer that?
Yes, Madam Chair. So there really are no differences. So the biggest difference is, you know, in our Cleveland Heights facility, right now, our shift minimum is seven. So when you have those major events, or you have, you're busy, whether it's a storm, a house fire, you have six other partners behind you to pick up that slack and are able to make those phone calls. When you dial 911 right now, as everybody knows, that wireless call goes down to the county, the county tries to ascertain where you're at, and then they transfer it. So that's, again, that's another 90 seconds of wasted time. I shouldn't say wasted time, it's a delay to get your first responders to the scene. So there are no any more delays in what you're answering right now. The phone call comes to us, we have standards that are set by the state of Ohio, we have to dispatch a fire truck or an ambulance within 90 seconds of once we have the nature of the call and the address, and we continually review that every month, and we've always met those standards.
Do, so is it an accurate assumption that more or less it's the same, it'd be the same for us and same for Westlake, but for places like Bay Village or Rocky River that aren't, or North Ridgeville that aren't doing full-time dispatch, they are substantially behind what we're, what you do and what we currently do?
Correct.
Okay.
So, if I may, it's a seven shift minimum for how many cities in that department?
So right now, as it stands, it's five larger cities.
I'm sorry?
As it stands right now, for the cities that we serve right there, it's five cities.
Five cities with seven? With seven dispatchers? So ours, then, we have three dispatchers for two cities and a fire department. And the five, police and fire.
I'm sorry to interrupt, Madam Chair, but is three our minimum, or is three what we usually have, and what's the same for them? Is two our minimum, is one our minimum, what's our minimum?
Chief?
So, so normal operation would be one, one police dispatcher, one fire dispatcher, and then a Fairview Park dispatcher in a perfect world setting.
But what's our minimum if-
So there are times, we will never have less than two in that room. There are some times where the Fairview desk isn't covered and the two dispatchers answer the Fairview Park calls. So always two, always two.
Okay.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, back to the five cities for the seven dispatchers, how large are those five cities?
They're large. Cleveland Heights, Shaker Heights, University Heights, South Uklund, Richmond Heights. So our two largest are Shaker Heights and Cleveland Heights.
Thank you.
And North Olmsted would be placed in the Hillcrest site?
That's correct, Madam Chair.
So Madam Chair, what would the minimum be if North Olmsted joins? It would remain seven, or would that go up?
It would go up to nine.
So, why is it, why would it go up to? I just, I'm just trying to understand the ratio with the, if it's five and seven, then it would be-
It's all based on how many radio channels that you have that dedicate a dispatcher to. So right now, in North Olmsted, you have one police channel, one fire channel, so that's how we would staff them. Keeping in mind that while the nine is the minimum, once we get to, if North Olmsted were to choose Chagrin Valley, our full staff, each platoon, would be 12, but you have to account for sick time, vacation time, holidays. But the minimum that we can go down to would be a minimum of nine.
So I understand these dispatchers can work in any of these communities, but are, Mr. De Cisco, are you saying that you would have a dedicated North Olmsted police and a dedicated North Olmsted fire in effect? Or is that for a period of time, or is that-
No, nothing would change is the officers or the firemen's normally daily business. The same channels are going to exist at Chagrin Valley that they do currently at North Olmsted. For the first eight to 12 months for any transition, the dispatchers that we take on will continue to dispatch for those cities, because not only has this changed for the police officers and the firefighters, it's changed for the dispatchers. So we don't want to upset the apple cart, per se, too much, so we want them to remain comfortable, and they're still going to dispatch for North Olmsted. And then after that eight to 12 months is when we start that cross-training process.
Thank you. Anyone else have questions? Dwayne, I know you have one more. Dwayne?
I do, I have another topic as well.
I'm zipping right now, yeah, I do, but I'll yield my time.
Mr. Glassburn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to also ask about our employees. And so, under, and some of this, Mr. De Cisco's appropriate answer, and some of this is others, under different scenarios, us stay as we are. Right now, we're getting requests for overtime that we haven't been getting before, which suggests that we're understaffed. If we stay the way that we are now, what is the time period it takes to onboard folks? What's the outlook for that? If we regionalize somewhere besides Chagrin, what would it look like for us in terms of, we might keep all of our staff, but what would it take to train, I don't know, the Westlake staff that come in with us to be able to dispatch North Olmsted? If anyone can hypothesize on that, at least.
So, Mr. Glassburn, I can probably address some training. Currently on the West Side, North Olmsted dispatchers are the only dispatchers that are dual-trained to dispatch fire and EMS, which means they're EMD-certified dispatchers, and they are police dispatchers. Nobody else on the West Side has that, with the exception of Lakewood. Transition time, training time, I'd probably defer to Mr. De Cisco on that.
Madam Chair, man? So it all depends on the level. If you do a lateral transfer, it could be two months, it could be six months. A brand spanking new employee, minimum of six-month onboarding.
Okay, so if we, it sounds like we have, if there was a Westshore, Westcome, whatever group, our dispatchers would have to be not only there for our own interests, but would be the core of the starting staff of that group, because only Lakewood has those other folks immediately available. That's, am I saying that correctly, Sergeant Fierito? I think I see a head nod, yes?
Yes.
Okay. So, we got the pseudo-pieces of information from Westcom. Just, and maybe Sergeant Fierito isn't the right person to answer this, but who, I know there's kind of a head person ahead of Westcom, but does Westcom, have they communicated to us when we would be getting a proposal? We have a, like, an actual proposal from Chagrin with numbers and expectations. Has Westcom indicated when that would be forthcoming, if they're serious about this, or do we know? And has it had the leadership, whether it's police or elected or otherwise, if any of these other communities said they're on board with Westcom doing that? If anyone can speak to that? Chief Wagner, please go ahead.
I really don't like to speak for other communities. There's been a lot of support for Chagrin Valley through the web chiefs. I know the support isn't as, isn't there for the web fire. And again, I hate to speak for other cities, but the fire is very content to do business the way they are through Westcom. They've been merged and consolidated dispatch for many years now, and it works for them. So they clearly don't want the move, and again, that's just the consensus I'm hearing from the fire chiefs. The, you know, one of the things that you need to take into consideration is that we decided to stay dispatching our own, and financially, that was a very, very good move. We operate very similar to the way Lakewood does, where they dispatch their own police and fire. Again, I think the price per call that the cities are paying for the fire departments for Westcom is way higher than what we would get moving to a different dispatch center, such as Chagrin Valley and/or Strongsville Southwest Dispatch.
And I apologize, Chief, if you're the wrong person for me to ask, but I guess what I'm trying to get at as a layperson to this is, who has the authority, so to speak, for Westcom? Is it just that gentleman who's the director? And if this committee was to wait for any length of time for additional information from them?
So we have not, at this point in time, seen any kind of whole proposal from Westcom. So it's been a little bit of piecemeal stuff, that the stuff that you were provided with today that we got yesterday. There was another piece of information that they got there, where they were trying to come up with a ballpark price per the amount of residents you have for your city, which I don't think is, and again, I'm speaking in my opinion, that it's not the correct way to try and to bill a city for potential dispatch services. But one of the big things, again, that Westcom has never dispatched for police, so that's a big issue for us, and really mainly like Sergeant Fierito said earlier, that they're going to be segregated. Police and fire would be segregated if we went to Westcom unless they come up with a new facility or information has changed that I was given previously from Westcom.
Okay, so, Madam Chair, what I'm trying to transition to a little bit is identifying what, if this committee waited for any length of time to, you know, because we've got a lot to think about from this meeting so far, what information do we not have that we want to have, and when and how do we get it, and what's reasonable in that space? I think I know the answer to my last question, which is just, in the past, the county would throw a lot of money at groups trying to regionalize PSAPS. But my understanding is that's no longer the case unless you are going towards the one unified network that Chagrin seems to be the leader to doing that. Is that the case? Does anyone know if the county is throwing a lot of money at PSAPS anymore to new ones to form? Chief Wagner, if you-
Yes, if I would. We did, myself, Director Schofield, and Detective Fierito did meet with, on a Zoom meeting a little over a month ago, with people from the county that said that they, there would be, there's, currently, there's no money available for, to quote unquote, "throw at" us to make a merger for us. Now, they don't know if there'd be any petition, but one of the things that we were told by county is that it would have to be police and fire together in the same room. And that was the information that was given to us. And that, there's no monies guaranteed, that they could potentially go ask the county executives for some of that money, but there's no guarantee. There's no money at this time budgeted for that specifically.
But we didn't get any kind of financial reward, or did we even get an atta boy from the county for taking on Fairview?
Chuck?
We got to thank you, but that is it. No money at all associated with that.
Okay.
And as for the budget for Westcom, I think you're asking to budget, for them to give you a budget for something that does not exist yet. They haven't created a police-fire dispatch center in Westcom, so I don't know that they can come up with a budget number for you, because they've never done it, and they probably have no idea what their true cost potentially will be.
Oh, I fully understand there are some substantial, if not impossible, barriers to Westcom becoming a dual-police-fire, multi-community entity. I just, again, if we try to thread that very thin needle, if it exists at all, want to know what steps are involved in that. So.
I think we could give you the steps that would be involved, but I don't know that they know all of the steps that are involved, because they don't do it.
I mean, it, I mean, part of what I'm getting at, and I don't want this to come off the wrong way, but Westcom itself, the organization that is Westcom, potentially could offer us this, but if the elected leadership of Westlake or Bay Village or Rocky River or whoever doesn't go along with it, does that undermine, like, do we need to know that the elected leadership? You know, so we got the, you know, we got the question of elected sign-off, we got the question of the technical capacity with leads, and we got other logistics sign-offs in terms of, do they have the physical space, can they, do they have employees? Like, there's a lot of that. But it seems like some of the first steps of, who's the decision-maker, and when can they get us something? You know? If that's, if the answer is that's impossible, then there's no point in waiting for information that will never come, but if somebody thinks it's possible that we might get this other offer, then I'd like to know when that could occur.
Councilwoman Heeman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. To Councilwoman Glassburn, I mean, I don't know that you can force Westcom, right? As much as we'd like to have something from them, if they're not delivering it, I don't know that there's leverage we have to tell them they have to give us a proposal. So I guess I'm willing, at this point, to just, you know, count them out, right? Because they're not something we can do, because they don't have police and fire in the same room, which is appearing to be, you know, the state and county requirement, but if they don't have it, they don't have it. And if they're not going to do it, then I would think, I don't know, we're not Westlake, we don't govern them, right? So I don't know how we tell them to give us something they don't, they can't.
I would like to stop our- I, I would like to stop our conversations about what Westcom does and does not do. I think that there's a lot of speculation. We don't have anyone from Westcom here to counter anything. No, no, I know, Ms. Councilwoman Heeman, I'm going to the other folks who, who keep saying that they don't, they haven't, they won't, they can't. I mean, if it's a question of dispatchers, you know that if we, I'm sure that our dispatchers would go over to Westcom. But if Westcom regionalized their fire departments, why, I mean, if they took in the fire departments and regionalized it that way, I don't understand why it's going to be so complicated if they were to take on the police. But again, without them here, I, I just think that we're spinning our wheels on, on what-ifs. Are there any other questions? All right. Seeing none, I know there were a couple of questions from committee. I know that Mr. Councilwoman Kelly had asked about the ARPA funding, if any of those funds could be used. I would like to know about the contract. And I think it would be beneficial if we could reconvene. I'm just checking the calendar. We can reconvene this meeting to, to another date that I will get with our Clerk of Counsel to schedule. Councilwoman Heeman?
Thank, thank you, Madam Chair. Could you include in the list of information requests? You know, to go back to, I'd like to know those deadlines, right? Like what are the hard deadlines of which we have to comply?
Absolutely.
And then a bigger, broader budget if we were to be the people to bring in? Like what, what's the, the budget number timeline and then how do we convince four other cities to come to us? Like what would that look like? Thank, thank you.
Thank you. One other question I do have, and that is, if we were to get other cities, would we be required to have their police and fire? Or could it just be one? One division? So that could be a question as well. Unless the Chief, I see his hand up.
We would not be required to have police and fire the way for the 911 funding monies. It would be five separate cities. North Ridgeville would not count if they decided, because they are with Westcom. They are looking to do something with their police dispatch as well. But it would be five cities within the county. So not necessarily. So police and fire from the same city counts as one. So if you have, right now, we have two. We have North Olmsted Police, North Olmsted Fire, and Fairview Park Police. But we could bring on just other police departments and the fire departments could stay with Westcom as they do operate now.
So potentially maybe North Ridgeville or Bay or River or, I mean, it's, it's possible.
It's, it's absolutely possible. North Ridgeville wouldn't count as one of the five cities though to get the 911 funding money. Because they're in Lorraine County.
Right, right. Understood. But there, Lorraine County would have to have something, I'm assuming.
So, so Lorraine County, Lorraine County operates their 911. They, they've had some, they, they've had some of their own troubles over there. That's, we were able to pick up a valuable employee from them. A little over a year ago or so, maybe going on two years now. She's great. But they, they do have their own 911 consolidated dispatch in Lorraine County.
Okay. Okay. Then we'll say, um, the question about the ARPA funding, I can also email our clerk and have, have her disperse those to, to everyone and then we'll just, um, schedule, reschedule the meeting to finish this discussion. Okay, Councilman Glassburn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the ARPA funds, I just want to remind folks that we have budgeted the funds for this year already. I'm sure, I mean, we literally, that was part of the finance meeting. Was in that transfer ordinance. Which isn't to say the money has been spent, but it's, it's been budgeted. So we would have to decide to not spend it on some of those things if we were using ARPA funds, if it's eligible. But I would like to see, I mean, to me, it sounds like the Westcom, whether it's a solution or not, is one of the biggest elements of this. And I would like to see whatever follow-up there is where we put, put forward to Westcom and say, either give us the real offer or tell us you can't do it, but speak for yourself on this and tell us. And show us if you can do it, how you can do it. I, I think that's incredibly relevant because if they can't, then further holding out for them to maybe do it is a fruitless effort.
How about, I have every, how about everyone email with your questions or I'll send a list of questions to, to our clerk. She can disperse them and then we can add on and then, and then have her distribute them out to, to the administrators. I mean, I would really like to wrap this up. We've been going for two hours. And I, I think it's time to end this meeting. We'll end with, I see Councilwoman Heeman has her hand up. The Chief has his hand up and I have an emoji hand from Councilwoman Gilchrist.
Madam Chair, just quickly, I, I think Westcom silence is speaking volumes, right? I mean, a Councilman Glassburn, maybe you'd like to reach out. I don't know how to make them.
Right. Well, I, yeah.
Silence sometimes is the answer. Thank you.
Chief?
Uh, just real quick comment. I, I was, I got a text from Detective Fierito on the side where he did inform me I misspoke. I was unaware if this is the case. Regional dispatch requires police and fire member, from all city members for regional dispatch. So apparently it does require police and fire.
So then what happens to those cities that, that only have one? So, so like what happens to Westcom? Or I'm just looking at other cities that don't have, like River is, they're independent. So obviously they're going to have to do something. But that's a conversation for another time. Councilwoman Gilchrist and then Councilman Kelly and then we're wrapping it up.
I just had a question about the ARPA funds. Now, I thought I was under the impression that we got them this year and then we get them the following year and that's it, right?
Yes.
Councilman Kelly, did you have your hand up?
I think there's a pretty good chance there's a representative of Westcom listening in on this tonight. I have a feeling that they know what everybody is asking and obviously it would take a official request to find out, but I'm, I'm sure the wheels are turning if there's going to be.
If there is a representative here from Westcom, would you please speak up now? Westcom representative? Okay, we do not have a Westcom representative here tonight. So, all right. That's a wrap.
Can we just make a formal motion, Madam, excuse me?
I was going to, Law Director, I was just trying to make sure that there was nothing else I was missing.
I jumped the gun. I apologize.
It's okay. Better to be safe than sorry. All right, then I am going to make a motion then to hold this resolution in committee and ask, I'm sorry?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Seconded by Councilman Kelly. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion passes with a vote of three to zero. Before we end completely, I will send, like I said, I will send the clerk the list of the questions. I'll have her distribute them to counsel. If I missed anything, please respond. We'll get it added and then we can have her send it out to the administration. Okay, we'll conclude our meeting then at 10:25. Thank you, everyone.